Okay, I'll start over. Okay, I'll start over. Okay, I'll start over. The January 10, 2019 meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. The January 10, 2019 meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. The January 10, 2019 meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Westfield High School Troubadour Chorus under the direction of the National Anthem by the Westfield High School Troubadour Chorus under the direction of the National Anthem by the Westfield High School Troubadour Chorus under the direction of Katie Pierce. of Katie Pierce. of Katie Pierce.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose starstruck and bright stars rule the perilous fight? Whose starstruck and bright stars rule the perilous fight? Whose starstruck and bright stars rule the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? and the home of the brave? and the home of the brave?
Thank you so much, it was beautiful. Thank you so much, it was beautiful. Thank you so much, it was beautiful. 3.02, Certification of Closed Meeting Compliance. 3.02, Certification of Closed Meeting Compliance. 3.02, Certification of Closed Meeting Compliance. In order to comply with Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary In order to comply with Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary In order to comply with Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on January 10, 2019, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public on January 10, 2019, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business on January 10, 2019, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements, and only such matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements, and only such public business public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Moon, seconded by Ms. Hines, all those in favor. Motion by Mr. Moon, seconded by Ms. Hines, all those in favor. Motion by Mr. Moon, seconded by Ms. Hines, all those in favor. And that motion is unanimous with all those at the table. And that motion is unanimous with all those at the table. And that motion is unanimous with all those at the table. A few other announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. A few other announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. A few other announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. Ms. Schultz will be absent this evening, she is not feeling well. Ms. Schultz will be absent this evening, she is not feeling well. Ms. Schultz will be absent this evening, she is not feeling well. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Tonight's agenda is available by going to School Board on the FCPS homepage and selecting Board Docs under upcoming School Board meetings. Board Docs under upcoming School Board meetings. Board Docs under upcoming School Board meetings. The meeting is also being streamed live online. The meeting is also being streamed live online. The meeting is also being streamed live online. Select "School Board" from the full menu and then click on the "Watch Live" button Select "School Board" from the full menu and then click on the "Watch Live" button Select "School Board" from the full menu and then click on the "Watch Live" button on the School Board Meetings webpage. on the School Board Meetings webpage. on the School Board Meetings webpage. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. 3.04, I call on Mr. McElveen for a National Hometown Hero Award recognition. 3.04, I call on Mr. McElveen for a National Hometown Hero Award recognition. 3.04, I call on Mr. McElveen for a National Hometown Hero Award recognition.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It is my greatest honor to speak tonight on behalf of the School Board in recognition
It is my greatest honor to speak tonight on behalf of the School Board in recognition
It is my greatest honor to speak tonight on behalf of the School Board in recognition
of Coach Daryl General, who has been named as America's 2018 Hometown Hero, a competitive
of Coach Daryl General, who has been named as America's 2018 Hometown Hero, a competitive
of Coach Daryl General, who has been named as America's 2018 Hometown Hero, a competitive
nationwide award sponsored by Flow Sports, live digital sports company.
nationwide award sponsored by Flow Sports, live digital sports company.
nationwide award sponsored by Flow Sports, live digital sports company.
The award recognizes the finest coaches across the country who have made an impact in their
The award recognizes the finest coaches across the country who have made an impact in their
The award recognizes the finest coaches across the country who have made an impact in their
community by changing high school-age athletes' lives for the better.
community by changing high school-age athletes' lives for the better.
community by changing high school-age athletes' lives for the better.
Coach General, who is one of the five finalists, took home $25,000 for winning the award.
Coach General, who is one of the five finalists, took home $25,000 for winning the award.
Coach General, who is one of the five finalists, took home $25,000 for winning the award. I can safely say that there is no one more qualified for this award.
I can safely say that there is no one more qualified for this award.
I can safely say that there is no one more qualified for this award.
I can think of one word to describe Coach General, if it is selfless.
I can think of one word to describe Coach General, if it is selfless.
I can think of one word to describe Coach General, if it is selfless.
His care for others is infectious, always prioritizing the success of others before
His care for others is infectious, always prioritizing the success of others before
His care for others is infectious, always prioritizing the success of others before himself.
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 I should say, of course, that he never puts himself first unless he's winning a marathon.
I should say, of course, that he never puts himself first unless he's winning a marathon.
I should say, of course, that he never puts himself first unless he's winning a marathon. And I should know about the difference that he has made in the lives of countless students.
And I should know about the difference that he has made in the lives of countless students.
And I should know about the difference that he has made in the lives of countless students.
After all, he was my running coach for three years at Marshall.
After all, he was my running coach for three years at Marshall.
After all, he was my running coach for three years at Marshall.
General has coached at Marshall since 2002, now for 16 years, and he has coached for
General has coached at Marshall since 2002, now for 16 years, and he has coached for
General has coached at Marshall since 2002, now for 16 years, and he has coached for
32 years overall.
32 years overall.
32 years overall.
Don't let his size deceive you, this man has won two Marine Corps marathons in 1995
Don't let his size deceive you, this man has won two Marine Corps marathons in 1995
Don't let his size deceive you, this man has won two Marine Corps marathons in 1995
and '97, and he was the top American finisher at the Boston Marathon in 1990.
and '97, and he was the top American finisher at the Boston Marathon in 1990.
and '97, and he was the top American finisher at the Boston Marathon in 1990.
And he has run in about 35 marathons across the country and overseas, and he still runs
And he has run in about 35 marathons across the country and overseas, and he still runs
And he has run in about 35 marathons across the country and overseas, and he still runs
marathons to this day.
marathons to this day.
marathons to this day.
When he was 21, he was the youngest person to qualify for the 1988 Olympic Trials, and
When he was 21, he was the youngest person to qualify for the 1988 Olympic Trials, and
When he was 21, he was the youngest person to qualify for the 1988 Olympic Trials, and
since then, he has qualified for five Olympic Trials, including when he was serving as
since then, he has qualified for five Olympic Trials, including when he was serving as
since then, he has qualified for five Olympic Trials, including when he was serving as
my coach in 2004.
my coach in 2004.
my coach in 2004.
He has twice been ranked among the top 10 runners in the United States.
He has twice been ranked among the top 10 runners in the United States.
He has twice been ranked among the top 10 runners in the United States.
In 1989, he ran his personal best marathon time of 2 hours, 14 minutes, and 42 seconds.
In 1989, he ran his personal best marathon time of 2 hours, 14 minutes, and 42 seconds.
In 1989, he ran his personal best marathon time of 2 hours, 14 minutes, and 42 seconds.
But again, Daryl's life has been first and foremost about helping others.
But again, Daryl's life has been first and foremost about helping others.
But again, Daryl's life has been first and foremost about helping others.
He believes that coaching allows him to give back to the sport he picked up as a kid growing
He believes that coaching allows him to give back to the sport he picked up as a kid growing
He believes that coaching allows him to give back to the sport he picked up as a kid growing up in southeast DC.
up in southeast DC.
up in southeast DC.
He has said, "I know I was fast enough and strong enough to challenge for an Olympic
He has said, "I know I was fast enough and strong enough to challenge for an Olympic
He has said, "I know I was fast enough and strong enough to challenge for an Olympic sport, but helping out and coaching was more important to me than trying to be an Olympian."
sport, but helping out and coaching was more important to me than trying to be an Olympian."
sport, but helping out and coaching was more important to me than trying to be an Olympian."
In 2017, I had the honor of presenting a different recognition to Daryl on behalf
In 2017, I had the honor of presenting a different recognition to Daryl on behalf
In 2017, I had the honor of presenting a different recognition to Daryl on behalf of the School Board, after he had been named All Met Girls Cross Country Coach of the
of the School Board, after he had been named All Met Girls Cross Country Coach of the
of the School Board, after he had been named All Met Girls Cross Country Coach of the
Year.
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 In fall 2016, he led his star runner Heather Holt to the individual state cross-country
In fall 2016, he led his star runner Heather Holt to the individual state cross-country
In fall 2016, he led his star runner Heather Holt to the individual state cross-country championship, and the Marshall girls team to the school's first state championship
championship, and the Marshall girls team to the school's first state championship
championship, and the Marshall girls team to the school's first state championship
in any sport in 40 years, going back all the way to girls basketball in 1976.
in any sport in 40 years, going back all the way to girls basketball in 1976.
in any sport in 40 years, going back all the way to girls basketball in 1976.
That same year, he led the boys to a regional title.
That same year, he led the boys to a regional title.
That same year, he led the boys to a regional title.
The Marshall cross-country team has gotten progressively bigger and better under his
The Marshall cross-country team has gotten progressively bigger and better under his
The Marshall cross-country team has gotten progressively bigger and better under his
leadership.
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 When he was my coach, my peers and I had no idea what kind of crazy life he was leading
When he was my coach, my peers and I had no idea what kind of crazy life he was leading
When he was my coach, my peers and I had no idea what kind of crazy life he was leading
because he would never talk about it.
because he would never talk about it.
because he would never talk about it.
To support his family, he was working three jobs in addition to coaching Marshall students
To support his family, he was working three jobs in addition to coaching Marshall students
To support his family, he was working three jobs in addition to coaching Marshall students
and keeping up his personal training.
and keeping up his personal training.
and keeping up his personal training.
His daily schedule went like this: He worked at Whole Foods from 1:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m.,
His daily schedule went like this: He worked at Whole Foods from 1:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m.,
His daily schedule went like this: He worked at Whole Foods from 1:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m.,
helped out with the DC running group from 8:00 to 9:30 a.m., worked at Metro Run and
helped out with the DC running group from 8:00 to 9:30 a.m., worked at Metro Run and
helped out with the DC running group from 8:00 to 9:30 a.m., worked at Metro Run and Walk from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and then came to coach at Marshall.
Walk from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and then came to coach at Marshall.
Walk from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and then came to coach at Marshall.
After going on his own run, he would sleep for maybe three to four hours a night.
After going on his own run, he would sleep for maybe three to four hours a night.
After going on his own run, he would sleep for maybe three to four hours a night.
To this day, he still crosses the Potomac, driving a long distance to support our schools
To this day, he still crosses the Potomac, driving a long distance to support our schools
To this day, he still crosses the Potomac, driving a long distance to support our schools
and our kids.
and our kids.
and our kids.
But Daryl's service to Fairfax County Public Schools is not limited to coaching.
But Daryl's service to Fairfax County Public Schools is not limited to coaching.
But Daryl's service to Fairfax County Public Schools is not limited to coaching.
This past fall, a custodial position opened up in Marshall High School.
This past fall, a custodial position opened up in Marshall High School.
This past fall, a custodial position opened up in Marshall High School.
Principal Jeff Litz and DSA Joe Swarm asked Daryl if he would be interested in the position,
Principal Jeff Litz and DSA Joe Swarm asked Daryl if he would be interested in the position,
Principal Jeff Litz and DSA Joe Swarm asked Daryl if he would be interested in the position, and of course, Daryl answered yes.
and of course, Daryl answered yes.
and of course, Daryl answered yes.
I think it's fair to say that he also holds the unofficial designation as the fastest
I think it's fair to say that he also holds the unofficial designation as the fastest
I think it's fair to say that he also holds the unofficial designation as the fastest
custodian in FCPS.[1363.61][1363.61](Laughter).
custodian in FCPS.[1363.61][1363.61](Laughter).
custodian in FCPS.[1363.61][1363.61](Laughter).
And when the opportunity to recognize Daryl as a hometown hero arose this past year,
And when the opportunity to recognize Daryl as a hometown hero arose this past year,
And when the opportunity to recognize Daryl as a hometown hero arose this past year,
his students leapt into action, creating promotional campaigns including Twitter and
his students leapt into action, creating promotional campaigns including Twitter and
his students leapt into action, creating promotional campaigns including Twitter and Instagram accounts to secure him the online vote totals to win.
Instagram accounts to secure him the online vote totals to win.
Instagram accounts to secure him the online vote totals to win.
He has said that he will use his $25,000 prize to help pay off his bills, and he may
He has said that he will use his $25,000 prize to help pay off his bills, and he may eventually
He has said that he will use his $25,000 prize to help pay off his bills, and he may eventually
eventually throw a party for the Marshall track teams to celebrate.
throw a party for the Marshall track teams to celebrate.
throw a party for the Marshall track teams to celebrate.
He has assured me that School Board members will also be invited to the party.
He has assured me that School Board members will also be invited to the party.
He has assured me that School Board members will also be invited to the party.
Congratulations, Coach General, for all you have done for Marshall and for Fairfax County
Congratulations, Coach General, for all you have done for Marshall and for Fairfax County
Congratulations, Coach General, for all you have done for Marshall and for Fairfax County
Public Schools over the years.
Public Schools over the years.
Public Schools over the years.
Sometimes the little guys do, in fact, win.
Sometimes the little guys do, in fact, win.
Sometimes the little guys do, in fact, win.
Now, before we come together for a photo, I want to recognize the staff of Marshall
Now, before we come together for a photo, I want to recognize the staff of Marshall
Now, before we come together for a photo, I want to recognize the staff of Marshall
High School and Daryl's family members who are here with us.
High School and Daryl's family members who are here with us.
High School and Daryl's family members who are here with us. From Marshall, we have Principal Jeff Litz, Director of Student Activities Joe Swarm,
From Marshall, we have Principal Jeff Litz, Director of Student Activities Joe Swarm,
From Marshall, we have Principal Jeff Litz, Director of Student Activities Joe Swarm,
and Director of Student Services Cindy Blakely.
and Director of Student Services Cindy Blakely.
and Director of Student Services Cindy Blakely.
With Daryl are his wife Tammy General, father David McLaughlin, sister Carolyn Freeman,
With Daryl are his wife Tammy General, father David McLaughlin, sister Carolyn Freeman,
With Daryl are his wife Tammy General, father David McLaughlin, sister Carolyn Freeman,
Aunt Pam Harris, Aunt Pam McLaughlin, Aunt Dorothy Crenshaw, and Uncle Dave Crenshaw.
aunt Pam Harris, aunt Pam McLaughlin, aunt Dorothy Crenshaw, and uncle Dave Crenshaw.
aunt Pam Harris, aunt Pam McLaughlin, aunt Dorothy Crenshaw, and uncle Dave Crenshaw.
It's the whole Thanksgiving crew here tonight.
It's the whole Thanksgiving crew here tonight.
It's the whole Thanksgiving crew here tonight.
Thank you all for joining us tonight to honor this special man.
Thank you all for joining us tonight to honor this special man.
Thank you all for joining us tonight to honor this special man.
Now, I invite all Board members and all friends of Daryl to join us at the dais for a photo.
Now, I invite all Board members and all friends of Daryl to join us at the dais for a photo.
Now, I invite all Board members and all friends of Daryl to join us at the dais for a photo.
So I now call on Mr. McElveen for a Resolution on Human Trafficking Awareness Month.
Tonight, I'm proud to present the Resolution on Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Whereas students in Fairfax County continue to fall victim to the enduring and growing threat of human trafficking, a threat that remains largely under the radar, understood little or not at all by many of our students and a majority of the community, this widespread complacency endures despite the expanding reach of traffickers around the world and here in our country, with criminals skillfully exploiting the lack of knowledge of students and their families. And whereas human traffickers continue to seek out students that are vulnerable in county, middle, and high schools and even elementary schools, a group which includes nearly every student at some point during their academic career, so that victims have been identified from every high school, most middle schools, and multiple elementary schools across the school district. And whereas these targeted children and young people come from every background and social and economic group, and are pursued in person at all places that students gather or spend time, including shopping malls, restaurants, and bus stops, and online through virtually every social media application, especially those that mask the user's identity. And whereas the Trafficking Awareness Curriculum pioneered by Fairfax County Public Schools with the support of the Just Ask Prevention Project remains the gold standard for building a realistic sense of the danger among students and their families, and educating them on warning signs to look for, with other districts across the nation continuing to reach out to learn from the example set here. And whereas engaged and informed young people are one of the best weapons against teen trafficking, as evidenced by the Just Ask Teen Advisory Board, which is made up of high school students from Fairfax County and across the region, and is empowering the next generation in the fight. And these young people are having a real impact every day through school campaigns, social media outreach, and their support events such as the Youth Care Conference on February 2, 2019. Whereas working in conjunction with these dedicated young people, educators, parents, medical professionals, law enforcement officials, civic organizations, and the business community are also playing an invaluable role in spreading the word and protecting the community with a shared goal of establishing a community free from this dire threat to our students and caring for the victims. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board again joins the County Board of Supervisors in recognizing the month of January 2019 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Fairfax County, and supports the efforts of all those who are seeking to eradicate human trafficking and end its devastating impact on our students and our community. I so move.
Is there a second? Second? Seconded by Ms. Darrenak Kofax. Mr. McElveen, would you like to speak to your resolution?
This is probably the fourth or fifth year that we have, as a board, recognized Human Trafficking Awareness Month. And I have to say, the impact that Just Ask Prevention Program has had on our community has been substantial. You walk into any high school, middle school around the county, you will see their posters, you will hear from students who have worked with them, and they are a true treasure in our community, so I'm so pleased they are with us here tonight. You did hear in the resolution that they are going to be having a countywide event on February 2nd called their Youth Cares Conference, and I encourage my colleagues and members of the public to join them in that endeavor. Thank you.
Ms. Darrenak Kofax, would you like to speak to your second?
Just briefly, Madam Chair. Mr. McElveen, thank you very much for bringing this very important resolution to help continue to raise awareness of this issue that is prevalent in our community. And thank you again to Just Ask Prevention for all the work that you do in supporting our students and making certain they are aware of what can happen out there. So, thank you.
Are there any other board members who would like to speak to this? No? So with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? And that vote is unanimous. Mr. McElveen?
Thank you. So please, everyone join me in welcoming Jody O'Hern, Associate Director of the Just Ask Prevention, and all those who are here this evening in support of this resolution to please join me at the dais for a photo with the board. Thank you.
The next order of business is citizen participation. Tonight, we have one citizen who has signed up to address the board, and we also have two video testimonies. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to no more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as the capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of public business. Please be mindful that there are often young children in attendance at these meetings or watching online, so language should be appropriate for all age levels. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks to all of those who have come to speak to us tonight. So our first speaker is Jenny Bai.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
My name is Jenny Bai, and I testified a few months ago about reevaluating the allocation process for special ed staffing. Thank you Superintendent Braband, your staff, members of the board, and our school administration for continuing to work with me on that issue. But tonight, I'm actually here to speak about a program that I created called #ICARE. It's a program I designed to teach students about inclusion through practical lessons and activities. Our school was also featured on NBC Washington for this program. Inclusion means that no one should be left out, not because of race, gender, sexuality, or differing abilities. I created #ICARE as a way to teach kids about inclusion while they are in school, sitting next to their peers, because it makes a huge difference when we can teach them how to be kind, compassionate, and respectful when they're learning it together in the classroom. So every month, I prepare a lesson and activity that focuses on a different aspect of inclusion. There's no extra work involved for the teachers. I do everything. I plan all of it for them, I make all the copies, and they just have to find 30 minutes within one month to execute the plan and do the activity with their students. The only cost to the school is the cost of copying the paper. I focus on different aspects of inclusion every month. For example, we did a lesson on empathy. We talked about what it is, how you demonstrate it. The younger kids read a book about a kid who had a horrible day. They got to discuss situations where they had a bad day, and then also identify what would have made them feel better. I gave them happy faces that they could decorate, and challenged them to give those out to anyone that they recognized as having a bad day, so that they could be empowered to help them and know that they can actually make a difference in someone's life. That very same day, my younger son was made fun of in the lunchroom, so he's crying, and his friend sitting next to him hands him one of her happy faces. And so, when else could she have learned this lesson? When else could she have learned that she had the ability to do something that could help her friend feel better? She recognized it, demonstrated her empathy, and learned a lesson that was, I think, so valuable. Teaching our kids the right lessons, and more importantly, creating the opportunities for them to practice the right actions can make a difference. We see bullying, depression, suicide, school shootings, and I think teaching them these lessons in school early on can make a difference in the future. So if anyone on the other side of this podium feels as convicted as I do to teach our kids young and often that they can be kind to one another and respect one another, I would love to partner with one of you, two of you, all of you, to take this to more schools and see how far we can go. I think the sky is the limit, and I think it could be a legacy that's something that you leave behind that would benefit so many kids in this program. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alexis Aronson.
And I'm Hannah Wong.
And we are first grade teachers at Westbrier Elementary in Fairfax County. We both participated in #ICARE as a part of National Inclusive Schools Week and wanted to share our takeaways. In our school, we focus a lot on relationships and building community. Students can't learn unless they're in a place where they feel safe, loved, and valued. While we do many things in our classroom to build community, like use a responsive classroom, and have morning meetings, the ICARE lessons helped emphasize inclusion and, most importantly, purposefully practice and apply what we preach.
#ICARE seamlessly integrates and supports the Portrait of a Gaudy Initiative, especially when it comes to preparing ethical and global citizens. Students have the opportunity to understand how their individual actions impact the community and others around them.
We've witnessed students firsthand applying these lessons in their own interactions naturally. We know that love is a language, but they need to practice how to express it. Some takeaways that we've had is even days or weeks after our ICARE lessons, students were applying these skills. For example, one of the lessons where you have smiley faces to give to others when they're feeling sad, we found students using those when they saw someone crying at recess or in the classroom days or weeks later. Students were very engaged and excited to report how they successfully utilize these skills independently.
So we just want to give you many thanks for listening to us, and we strongly urge you to take into consideration the #ICARE program for other schools in our county.
Thank you. So cute.
I'm Tina Williams, School Counselor and President of Fairfax County Federation of Teachers, Local 2401, AFT. The mid-year report shows that FCPS is receiving less state funding than projected due to lower enrollment numbers. Virginia's overall support of public education still lags behind levels before the Great Recession. We all know this: School board members, administrators, teachers, staff, parents, and others who care about children and want the best possible education to prepare them for their future. That is why Red for Ed's campaign has succeeded in bringing so many of us together to support full funding of public education in Virginia. Recently, our school board honored this effort with a resolution recognizing Red for Ed. Virginia Educators United, another advocate for our schools, is closely aligned with Red for Ed in the fight for resources for our children. VEU has five main goals. Those are restoring full funding, increasing teacher pay to at least the national average, and competitive wages for all education professionals; recruiting and retaining high-quality, diverse educators; addressing infrastructure needs; and ensuring that every school has adequate support staff like counselors, nurses, and social workers. After 10 years of systematic defunding, now is the time for Virginia's children and schools to become the number-one priority. Today, Virginia has a growing economy and new revenue sources. VEU is leading the campaign and the march to put students first. This is truly a grassroots effort. No one group, individual, or organization is doing this alone. This is a collaboration of many stakeholders, including my organization, the FCFT. I'm so happy that we are not alone in this. The Red for Ed movement includes PTAs, educators, school administrators, students, parents, many community partners, and anyone who supports quality public education. Full funding is essential, and we will advocate in our schools, communities, and enrichment with the General Assembly. Our elected officials have a real opportunity to correct our school funding for the long term. Governor Northam has taken a small step towards that in his budget amendments, but it will take much bolder actions to remedy years of funding cuts. On January 28th, thousands of supporters of Red for Ed's agenda will march alongside VEU on the state Capitol to demand that legislators make Virginia's public education and students their number-one priority. This will be a day of solidarity for the entire Commonwealth to state loud and clear that the future of every county and community depends on...
For Student Representative Matters, I call on Mr. Tigner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday break, got some time off, enjoy the rest, and that we all got a great start into our new year. Before I begin, I'd like to recognize two Boy Scout troops that are here tonight who are working on a badge. We've got Troop 10875 from Falls Church and Troop 1978 from Vienna. Thank you, guys, so much. On a slightly sadder note, recently, one of our students from South Lakes High School passed away. Daniel Cruz Serrano was killed last Saturday in a hit-and-run incident, actually less than a mile from my home. And my thoughts and prayers go out to his family, him as well, and his close friends in his time of sadness. Thank you. For sort of a little thing to address today, there's been sort of a thing I've seen some of my friends having a tough thing, a time with, especially in this new year. You know, everyone preaches new year resolutions, starting something new, turning over that new leaf. But for a lot of people, and for me especially, it's been really tough to go from that zero to one, you know, to take that first step. It's really tough. And you know, something, it could be something large for some people out there. It might be starting a company, right? Or, you know, writing that first college application essay over that summer. That's always a tough thing. But it could be as small as working on that homework assignment when you get home, right? A couple of busy work things here or there. It's sometimes difficult to get down and get going. And sort of gain that momentum, once you get there, after that first step, things become a little bit easier. And that's what you're sort of striving toward when you take that first step. So, for example, when you write an essay, going from zero to having that outline, that's really tough. You have to do research, you need to know your topic, you need to know all the things you're going to write about, the evidence you're going to use to support it. But once you begin writing, now you've begun, and it's much easier. Same thing, it could be talking about your homework, right? You have to get the classwork out, right? You have to get your notebook, your textbook, your notes. You've got a pencil, sit down at your desk, but once you start that first problem, things become easier, right? It could be getting out of bed in the morning, right? Showering, eating breakfast, getting to school. But once you get to school, it's much easier to learn. So going from that zero to first step, that's a really tough thing. And at least with me after break, my sleep schedule is all messed up. I slept in longer than I should have for most of the day, stayed up later than I should have, and coming back to school, it's been really tough, and that thing's sort of been switched, and now I'm running a little bit less sleep than usual, and sort of going from that zero to one step has been really difficult. So for students out there, even parents going back in to work after the break, just good luck with that first step, and once you pass that, things get always easier from there. Thank you.
Thank you. I now call on Dr. Braband for the presentation of his fiscal year 2020 proposed budget.
Good evening, Chairman Corbett Sanders, members of the Fairfax County School Board, leadership team, members of the audience that are here tonight live, in person, and those folks that are watching at home. Good evening. It is an honor to be here tonight, and my second full year as superintendent, and to present to you the fiscal year 2020 budget. I continue to love Fairfax County and love being back as superintendent to serve students, families, members of the community, and our staff in the very best way that I can. Tonight, I'll be presenting to you what I believe is a budget that has the needed resources to be sure that we can continue to meet our community's expectations of delivering excellence, equity, and effectiveness in all that we do. We've had a very strong collaborative and collegial relationship with the county. I have felt that as superintendent at all levels in the organization, between the school board and the Board of Supervisors, between the county executive and myself, and really through all of our employees working with county staff. And I am going to continue in presenting this budget and during this budget process to maintain that same collaborative relationship. I believe it has paid off in real dividends. As you know, in FY '19, we had the first fully funded budget for schools in over 20 years, and I attribute that to the great partnership this board has helped create. I want to say before I get started tonight with this budget, which really presents a vision of where we want to go for fiscal year '20, that this is indeed an achievable vision. With the revenues based on the state governor's proposed budget that he presented to the General Assembly last night, and the county transfer that we shared with both this board and the Board of Supervisors in the fall, the gap between the budget I am presenting and our anticipated funding revenues is $2.4 million, one-tenth of 1% of our total budget. This is an achievable budget for Fairfax County Public Schools. As we look at the budget focus for this year, like last year, employee compensation remains our primary core priority. We must build a premier workforce, and it starts with completing our multi-year investment in teacher pay to get our teachers that market competitive compensation throughout their entire career here in Fairfax County. We know, and this board knows, that a high-quality teacher is the first foundational ingredient for student success in our school system. This focus on premier workforce is part of one of the four goals of our strategic plan Ignite. And while this budget focuses, again, really on our compensation for... And while this budget focuses again really on our compensation for employees, this is also a budget that continues a greater alignment between our budget and our strategic plan Ignite and our strategic focus for 2018 to 2020. I want to just share this with the audience tonight. We've put this out in all schools to help us really focus on our strategic plan. Student success remains our foundational goal around those portrait of a graduate attributes of creative and critical thinkers, collaborators, communicators, goal-directed individuals, and ethical and global citizens. And under student success, we want to provide portrait of a graduate attributes for every student in every Fairfax classroom. We also have committed to eliminating access, opportunity, and achievement gaps for every student, regardless of where they are in Fairfax County and their background. And finally, we've committed under student success to making sure all of our young kids get access to high-quality early education experiences. The second category in our strategic focus remains our caring culture, a welcoming environment for our students and families when they come in to enter our schools or our offices, and helping support as a school system healthy life choices for our students and for our employees. Our third area in our strategic plan that we will continue to work to align this budget around is premier workforce. And as I shared with you before, market competitive compensation with a focus on finishing that work around our multi-year investment for our teachers. We know as part of a premier workforce, we need to continue to attract and retain exceptional employees, not just in the classroom, but throughout the organization in every position. And finally, our fourth bucket under our strategic plan focus is resource stewardship. We know that we're stewards of the taxpayers' money and that we must budget and allocate those resources in an efficient and effective manner. When we begin to look at this budget, we're going to move now to the next slide. This budget represents a $3 billion school operating fund. It's a 4.1% increase over FY19. But as large as this budget is, I want you to remember that the core focus remains around our instructional programs, which is what has always attracted folks to Fairfax County Public Schools. Nearly 86% of this budget is focused around instructional programs. And if you looked at it another way, nearly 90% of our budget is focused on employee compensation, salary, and benefits. This is a budget that continues to have at its core a focus on instruction and on paying our people who are our most important asset. I also want to show you, as we look at this budget, how this budget is aligned around our strategic plan goals. I told you we want to move to that greater alignment, and you can see in a $3 billion budget, over 50% of the programs in our budget are around student success. A little bit under 30% is aligned around premier workforce, a little bit over 12% around resource stewardship, and a little under 5% around caring culture. We have started a multi-year plan to begin to align all of our programs in Fairfax County under this strategic framework. And we are moving forward to do that work. And I appreciate Marty Smith, our COO, and our CFO, Lee Burden, to help in getting that work done in the year ahead and in the years ahead. Let's go to the next slide and look at the budget changes that I am reporting to you for next year. And I want to make these same changes to the budget under the same strategic plan framework of student success, caring culture, premier workforce, and resource stewardship. This is just a summary of all those categories. In general, I'm asking for over $117 million in new revenues in this budget. And you can see when we look at what the changes are for this budget compared to the current budget. Overwhelmingly, we are investing in our premier workforce. 73% of this ask is for supporting our teachers and our employees to have market competitive salaries. You can see about 14% of it, a little over 16 million, would be aligned around student success, a little under 10 million to support caring culture, and around 6 million for resource stewardship. Under each of these categories, you can see the specific areas, and I will be going now slide by slide to go over those areas for you so you can see what's behind those components. First, let's talk about student success. I have a total of $16.1 million to look at under this goal of student success, and let me start with instructional programs. First, I am proud to have worked with this school board in the fall during our work sessions to discuss FCPS ON. And this board and the work session asked for me, directed the superintendent to put in the FY20 budget, support for FCPS ON target at our high schools. It's time to provide equity of access to technology for our high school students so they can be ready for the workplace that now has technology is a defining characteristic of what is essential in college and career. This budget also would continue to have support, and that's about a little over $4 million. This budget will continue to support online campus, about $600,000. We continue to have expanding enrollment on online campus, and we want to provide our teachers with the hourly support necessary to have those courses. A little, a million dollars for our learning management system. We have a learning management system that is 20 years old in Fairfax County. We're currently going through a process, a procurement process around that, and we need some additional dollars to make sure that we have the latest learning management system that will meet the needs of our students and staff members. You can see the academy program on there. We have had a world-class academy program for years, but for the last 10 years, we have had flat staffing, even as enrollment has surged and we've had to turn away kids from wonderful programs. This budget puts an additional half million dollars in to begin to expand positions for academy courses in areas like world languages and CTE. You also see AVIDA's on here. AVIDA is something I knew as a principal in Fairfax County. I had it in my school, and I've learned now as superintendent, it's not a program that we've had everywhere. And as we begin to put a one Fairfax lens, an equity lens on our work, we need to begin to be sure that programs that we know work, that we have available in all of our schools. This is the beginning of a multi-year plan to expand AVID into all of our middle and high schools, and we would add one more in our, one high school, one more in one middle school, and for the first time, begin to put AVID at a Title I elementary school. If we start young with the right supports, all of our kids can succeed. FISUP is our early childhood education. We have some dollars in here for additional salary and benefit support for those folks. ACE is something that this board has talked about for a long time. This is a program that we had to cut in the budget several years ago. We serve over 20,000 folks in the community through our ACE program, including students. And this is, in this budget, I've decided instead of having the discussion about supporting the ACE program at the end of the year, to put this in, in the beginning, in the budget embedded, the additional support needed to make sure that ACE continues as a strong program for Fairfax County. VPI Plus is a part of the preschool initiative, and we have some additional dollars that are required to support that program and that contract. We also have our assessment database. We've had a homegrown assessment database created by one of our own employees who is now retired, and we need to bring that assessment database into the 21st century. It was done in the prior century, and we need to get it up with the appropriate functionality necessary to continue to use. As part of that assessment database, we have folks that use that called assessment coaches in our high schools. Their contracts were cut in past budgets, and we need more than ever with the new state accreditation standards to be able to have those assessment coaches to be able to look at the database and provide schools with the necessary data support to help guide their school improvement plans. For instructional resources, we have some additional dollars in there to support a little bit over a half million, 600,000 actually, for our high school language arts adoption. We've had textbook reserves, but that's been focused more on our math and social studies, and we haven't had the dollars necessary to do a language arts update. So this additional dollars will help us there. And I think I have covered, oh, I haven't covered everything. Substitute pay, we've been talking about that in work sessions, and we'll have a future work session around it, but we have a placeholder there for substitute pay. We have seen, based on budget cuts, a reduction in the number of folks who've come to substitute. I will be talking a little bit later about something we are doing to really, in a moment of crisis in our community, that we've asked our community to come in and become a part of the Fairfax family and to help our community to become substitutes. But we need a long-term strategy to restore our substitute pay in a way that helps fully staff our schools. For staffing initiatives is another part of student success, and this is a set of possibilities that I asked this board to consider carefully in the months ahead. We've talked together as a board and superintendent and leadership team about world languages. We've talked about having a study around our advanced academic programs. And so one idea too around that is how we can improve with a one Fairfax lens, that equity lens, having a full-time AART in every elementary school, where they're currently only staffed at .5, and schools have to trade to get that full-time teacher. Ideas like tuition reimbursement. Many of you may go, well, Scott, you brought that back last year. We did a tune of, I think, about $1 million, and demand is overwhelming. And why is that a staffing initiative? It is a way to keep staff, and it was a longstanding way that we not only attracted people to Fairfax County Public Schools, but we kept them because they got the opportunity to become lifelong learners. There are other ideas that I know individual board members have, and I would love to work together to have conversations about what those additional staffing initiatives are. This budget, as I shared with you, again, is focused primarily around employee compensation. But we've got to have a strategic focus that starts to build in the years ahead, returning to look at the staffing, the staffing formulas, and the programs that have made Fairfax County a world-class school system. One part, final part here on student success is around staffing initiatives, and that's a staffing reserve replenishment of a little over $4 million. And the bottom line on this is, this budget realigns our elementary staffing standard to link our policy with practice. The FY19, and in past budget years, allocated classroom teachers in our budget at a ratio of 27.25 to 1. But our policy said that we were going to provide class size at elementary school starting at 26 to 1, and then add in additional lower class size based on free and reduced lunch. The truth is, we never fully staffed our elementary schools at the time of the hiring season, like we did our middle and high schools. I am proposing to move, and we talked a little bit about it back during the mid-year, moving some of the staffing reserve and putting it into our elementary folks at staffing time in the spring when they can hire the best and the brightest teachers and support staff for those schools. Shifting the staffing reserve, I think it's prudent fiscally, given potential enrollment fluctuations, to just replenish our staffing reserve a little bit. And so I've added an additional 40 positions in the reserve at the tune of a little over $4 million to just be sure, and an abundance of caution, that we're able to address special circumstances, any class size issues that come out outstandingly. But the bottom line is this, our elementary principals need to be fully staffed by our own board policies that are already out there, just like middle and high, to get the staffing they need at the point of the hiring season where they can attract the best and brightest, and not having to come back in August and September and engage human resources and the leadership team and asking for positions from the reserve. And I want to applaud Lee Burden and Marty Smith and their team for digging into the details and looking at an old formula to make sure that the policies that this school board has are really the reality in practice, and that's what this is going to allow us to do. Finally, many of you know that we did share, this budget does project a decrease of 1,343 students when compared to the FY19 approved budget, and we'll have savings a little bit over $6 million for that. And we did talk about year-to-year enrollment numbers, and we saw a slight decrease for the first time really since 2006. But I need to tell you this too, that around the area, and we shared this at a work session, all school divisions saw a contraction in growth or a slight contraction in enrollment. And ironically, over the winter break, I don't know if many of you saw, the Commonwealth of Virginia, for the first time in 30 years, reported its first dip in K-12 enrollment. So Fairfax is certainly just part of the context of what's going on both in the region and the state. As we move on to caring culture, you can see this is a total of a little over, of $9.5 million, and the biggest focus is mental health, safety, and healthcare. Let me tell you what's in those three components. First, I want to talk about healthcare, which is the largest, a little over $5 million. Our health insurance continues to increase, but this year only 2%. Last year was a little over 5%. We've really been able to lower down that to only a 2% increase, and that's a little over $5 million. This also has 2.9 million. We talked about at a quarterly review at the, late in the year last year, as we did our comprehensive security review at the end of the school year around supporting student mental health, and we put additional supports at the middle school, around threat assessment, and around safety and security training, where we would move tabletop from not just a three-year cycle but to an annual cycle. This goes ahead and builds it in the budget as a reoccurring expense, so that that work that we've done with our safety review is ongoing in future budgets. And finally, 1.1 million of that 9.2 million is for cost increases in our current maintenance and service contracts that include contracts around skilled nurses, contracts for speech and language services, for educational interpreters, and also for school psychologists. The next part of the caring culture you can see is $200,000 for an equity and positive student behavior support position. I know, and you know, that this board has asked us to work around providing for you a full report in June and a plan around how we will approach that report in January, I think just later on this month, around disproportionality and discipline. I want to be proactive in this budget and begin to go ahead and create a position that can help us lead with an equity lens around our school discipline practices and procedures, and begin to establish more consistently positive behavior strategy supports throughout our schools and throughout all support parts of our organization. This allows that work to begin. Finally, there are skip, many of, I know the school board has representatives to the skip committee, and I know it's Tammy Dernak-Kofax, and who am I going to forget, Tammy? And Megan, founding board member. And they have been doing work together with the Board of Supervisors to make recommendations, and there's $100,000 in there for recommendations around a early development instrument for young children and for additional playgroups that could serve over 200 more children who currently aren't getting access to full-time, a full-time early childhood program. When we look at the next goal, premier workforce, you can see again, this budget is about employee compensation. It's finishing our teacher salary enhancement to get our teachers at market compensation, and that salary scale adjustment includes a 1% MSA for our teachers. It also includes step increases for all of our employees that average about 2.6%. For our folks that are not teachers, we also have that same 1% MSA for all of our other employees who are not teachers. We maintain our BA lanes salary scale placeholder. I know we've engaged the board for the last two years around, and in particular in detail this year, around what we're going to do with our BA lanes teachers. And I am confident we have a placeholder in place that we will be able, through the work session between now and our approval of the budget, a permanent solution to our BA lanes concerns. This board, over the past several years, has often, at the end of the year, provided bonuses for those that are at top of the scale. This budget puts in the budget right now that we would continue the practice of providing bonuses for those that are at the top of the scale or who are stepping into a hold step in FY20. This budget also reflects our parent liaisons. We've done a lot of work to support parent liaisons and provide full benefits for them. There is a group of parent liaisons working about 20 to 24 hours a week that have not had access to those benefits, and this budget allows that to happen. And I know board leadership has been a big part of making that happen. This budget also, as part of premier workforce, works to move our living wage to the county's living wage from $1,450 to $1,483 per hour. I know that for board members and maybe for this community, it's part of an even broader conversation about is $1,483 per hour a living wage in Fairfax County Public Schools today? But this budget works to put parity with the county and leaves room for additional conversation between both boards as you all make critical decisions around workforce. Beyond compensation, a big part of our support and benefits in Fairfax County has been our retirement programs, and there are some employer retirement contribution increases. ERFC went up just slightly in terms of the employer rate, about 2/10ths of a percent from 6.2% to 6.44%. from 6.2% to 6.44%. And we have a number of our employees who are in the county retirement plan called FCERS, and that went up slightly, a little over 1%. You may be asking, where is VRS, the state retirement system? Those rate contributions are unchanged, and we hope that will continue for some time. As in past years, those changes cost school divisions a significant amount of money that could have gone directly to employee salaries. Finally, I have under premier workforce, $700,000 for equity and employee relations support. These would be positions that would provide investigation, expertise, and support to the regions and school divisions regarding complaints that have been filed under Title IX or on other civil rights laws. This board has made clear to me, and I made clear at the leadership conference, that we will have an organization here in Fairfax County that is free from discrimination and that is free from bullying and harassment. And the work around equity and employee relation support will give us the needed support to make sure that as folks come forward, their concerns are handled in a timely and thorough manner. The fourth goal of resource stewardship, before I show you the dollar breakdown for that, I want to remind Fairfax County and our community that we are good stewards of their resources. As we look at the WABE, which is a region-wide comparison of cost per pupil, Fairfax ranks fifth of the 10 divisions in the WABE guide. As you know, cost per pupil is primarily driven by salaries and class size, and Fairfax County is squarely in the middle of that ranking. This is an alphabetical ranking with the rank over at the far right, and you can see we're five out of 10. If you cut that through another look, if we go to the next slide and looked at it through a lens of school-based employees, the highest percentage of school-based employees, we ranked second among those divisions at 93.4%. What I want you to see, though, under the resource stewardship breakdown, a little under $5 million is around contractual services that support current service and maintenance contracts, such as our public radio system replacement. That's been a long-time thing that we've been trying to work on. I can tell you that as a former principal. We have a lease at Willow Oaks, which is a building that we do not own. We have some other facility leases as well, maintenance supplies, intranet accessibility. We have a Microsoft enterprise agreement that has had some contractual increase. Inflation for replacing our buses has caused an increase to the contract there and for some mobile data terminals. We've also had some utility increases of a little over $1 million from Dominion Energy and Dominion Power. And I know that through the discussions of the CIP, the board will continue to have robust discussions about how we can continue to be efficient and effective around our energy purchases and our energy delivery. And then finally, there's a slight decrease in the school construction fund. This is dollars that cannot be spent on bond funding for things in schools like furniture fixtures and equipment, and just based on the bond cycle at this moment, we needed a little bit less to be transferred to the school construction fund. When you look at all the budget changes, again, we have it back here by strategic plan category. And as I said before, I'm asking for over $117 million in new money to this board and to this community. The large majority of that remains with our premier workforce, and then we're doing some to begin to really restore the instructional programs and staffing initiatives under student success. We've made a real commitment around school security and caring culture and goal two, and a work to be prepared for future discipline discussions, and again, a small amount around resource stewardship. As we look into our revenue for Fairfax County, I think it's important to remember how important our partnership with the county is. The county board of supervisors and their work of helping support schools, that county transfer makes up over 71% of our proposed budget, which is about the same as last year. In fact, it's exactly the same. As you know, for Virginia, state revenue is a little under 24% for Fairfax County, and I do want to applaud the governor for his proposed budget that increases state support even to Fairfax County. The new governor's proposed budget does bring Fairfax County millions of dollars more that we would not otherwise have in this budget and allow us to reduce the gap between what we're asking for in the budget and the needed revenue. So I certainly appreciate the governor's support, and I know he shared it with the General Assembly last night, and their work on that budget will be forthcoming. It's important for the board to remember and for the public to recognize that the state share of 23.8% to Fairfax County is nice, but the state share to school divisions on average around the rest of the Commonwealth of Virginia is almost double what it is for Fairfax County. We will continue to work with our county board of supervisors to work on the state funding methodology, and we'll continue to work with our county board of supervisors to support having a premier school system. And I talked to the county executive today, and we both are excited about working with both boards to see our budgets, and I know he'll present his shortly in another month to fruition. As we look at our revenue overview, there was a slight increase to the beginning balance compared to the prior FY19. Our county transfer request is at $84.4 million. The state revenue, which again, as I gave is an asterisk, that is based on the governor's introduced budget that was conveyed to us on December 18th, a little over $36 million. Federal aid is still a little bit uncertain, but our best thinking is that we're going to get a slight increase in federal aid of about $1.2 million. And then other revenue, under other revenue, that's our Fairfax City tuition. Many of you know that Fairfax City actually is its own school division by law, and they pay it through a tuition contract. And under the same category, as part of FCPS ON, we will have a technology fee for students of $50. Students that are on reduced lunch would have a technology fee of 25, and those that are on free lunch would have no fee at all. It's also important, just as we're talking about FCPS ON, and I know we've had before, but to remind you, this FCPS ON doesn't just provide access to the digital device. We'll be able to provide mini WiFi's for students that don't have access at home, which is so critical for those students who have to go home and do the homework and need to be able to have the same level playing field to have access to the resources they need to do their work and complete their assignments. Finally, there's a little bit of reduction in the textbook reserve. I hope all of you, as we look forward in the budget process, become involved. The school board, I know you'll be very involved. We're going to have work sessions coming up, and then you'll pass your own actually advertised, the advertised budget, and then we'll actually do the budget approval in May. But there's open opportunities to attend for the public the meetings and to watch them streamed on our website, or to speak at a school board meeting, or to speak at a board of supervisors meeting once their budget comes out. And all of our latest budget information will be up later this evening at www.fcpss.edu/budget. And we hope that this community, which has always been very engaged around our school system, will continue the engagement in this budget year. The final slide you can see is the budget timeline. There'll be a work session on the budget January 22nd. There'll be public hearings starting on January 28th. There'll be another budget work session televised right here at Luther-Jackson on the 31st, and then the board will adopt the advertised budget on February 7th, and will hand it over to the county for their support and stewardship in the months ahead, and then ultimately back for the board to approve on May 23rd. It's exciting to be back. The Fairfax County that I got to come into over a quarter century ago was the premier school system in the Commonwealth in the country, and it remains so today. But we have to recognize that budget cuts over the last few years have hindered us in making sure that we have the premier workforce. Last year's budget and this budget continue the emphasis of making sure the best and brightest come to Fairfax County and stay in Fairfax County. We're beginning in this budget not only to support outstanding compensation for outstanding people, but beginning to make small tweaks with the One Fairfax equity lens around staffing formulas and programs that we know can help drive student success. It's a joy to be back, and it's a joy to be bringing you a budget that not only supports your strategic plan, but also is an achievable budget. And I want to remind this board, with the current county transfer and the governor's proposed budget, this is a budget vision that can be a reality with the support of this community, our board of supervisors, and our state legislators. So I look forward to questions. I know there'll be a lot at our work sessions. I look forward to working with you again this year on a wonderful budget to support our students, our schools, and our community. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Brabrin. Certainly exciting presentation and good news for us thus far. And as you said, we have a work session coming up on January 22nd where we're set aside the plane of time for questions to be answered and have a discussion amongst the school board members as well. And meanwhile, board members can also send in their questions. Not all questions need to be asked tonight. With that in mind, let me call on Ms. Hines to be followed by Ms. Evans.
Okay, I hear you, Mr. Moon, but I do have a few questions. But thank you. Two years in a row of a very hopeful budget outlook, when we feel like, there was a time there not long ago when it felt like we might never really dig out, you know, and might never recover from the cuts. So this is very good news. So slide six, I just wanted to go to some of the things, a couple of things, questions. Under staffing initiatives, possibilities, I wanted to know kind of what you meant by possibilities, but before you answer that, well, why don't we answer that first? Are you thinking, is this in the budget or not?
Staffing initiatives, the $6 million is in the budget as a placeholder. I know there are board ideas around how we can support staffing, whether it's world languages, AART, other ideas that board members have had, and I've left this as a placeholder for the board to do engagement with one another. Staff has some ideas, these were just a few, we didn't list everything. I also know that there's some real discussions we're going to have shortly around a discipline report that's due in June, starting to look at our advanced academic programs, and I want the board to have some flexibility to be able to look as they do that sort of engagement around having a chance to move dollars to support those initiatives. So that's the purpose of that $6 million.
Okay, thank you, because one of the budget questions that I know my colleague, Mr. Dernak-Kofax, asked, and I don't know if we've had the answer yet, is what it would cost to get one full-time AART permanently staffed in every elementary school?
Okay.
And so if that's $6 million, are we suggesting that that would be enough to cover that, or do we not know?
I don't know that off the top of my head tonight, and we can start to put with these ideas what the price tags would be for full or partial implementation of any of these ideas.
Okay, all right. I was just curious when I saw that there. I'm not, we'll get the answer when we need it, I'm sure.
Okay.
No worries, I was just wondering. Do we have, speaking of AART, do you feel confident that we have in the budget the funding that we need to carry out the study?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay. The staffing reserve, and I believe that is, yes, right, there's staffing initiatives on slide six.
Right.
Staffing reserve replenishment. So as I understand it, this is for clarification, we should expect and we should hope for, for our elementary schools, what you described, which is in the spring during the big peak hiring time, our elementary schools' principals will be able to hire what we and they anticipate will be their need for the fall, and there won't be that lag and that worry. We don't, do we expect from there lower class sizes? Not really, right?
We expect that we'll be able to have lower class size of about 1 and 1.4 kids at the staffing season when principals at elementary need it most to make their hiring decisions.
So that makes...
So I do think, we've got into the class size requirements that the board's had, but we've gotten to it late in the process of hiring instead of upfront. And we need to have the confidence of our budget and budget resources to let our elementary principals get their properly allocated budgets on the front end, just like middle and high school, and not wait to have it. And the reality was, we were dividing by a slightly higher number than what our own staffing reserve, and we have the tables and can talk about that at work session to the degree that board members want to. I think elementary principals are going to be excited about getting that staffing upfront, and nothing in this formula changes the policies that this board has made around needs-based staffing or class size caps, none of that. Those are other discussions that can be had. This just makes sure that the staffing that you should get gets delivered to you in that spring hiring season when you can get the best and brightest and not waiting to see how the numbers come out when you're in August and September, when it's far harder to get the kind of quality person you want for your school.
Right, and then you're fixing problems rather than preventing the problem for the first person.
But part of it, I honestly, and again, you know, Lee, Marty, myself, looking at it, we've had tough budget times. We've had to try to figure out how we skimped and made it through and had a staffing reserve. And I want to remind you too about this for the staffing reserve. If we don't need the staffing reserve, we're not going to use the staffing reserve. We did not use all of our staffing reserve this year. Any staffing reserve in here that we don't need, or even all of it, can still be carried over into the next budget year. But on an abundance of caution, some people think the economy is about to go up, some think it's about to go down. The last time it went down, enrollment actually went up in the school system. I want to make sure we have a reserve that covers us in abundance of caution while also doing the right thing by our elementary principals and schools.
Okay, thank you. One other question on that slide, the projected enrollment going down, doesn't that affect our state revenue?
It does, but I want to say, Lee, we've calculated all of that enrollment decline in that saving the projected enrollment and demographics of 6.3 million, correct? Yes.
Okay, thank you. On slide 11, and this may seem a little, it will seem unexpected in this moment, and I apologize for that.
That's okay.
I'm just throwing this out there. We talk about the cost of utilities going up by the 1.4 million, and I'm assuming that is just that the price being charged to us by Dominion is going up by some amount. So I wonder, and maybe I'll put this as a budget question, would be, if we took our total cost of electricity, you know, whatever we're getting from Dominion, and the price of that, and then we compared that to the price that some school systems are getting, there's the PPA in Arlington, where I believe they're getting their electricity at eight cents per kilowatt hour, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Plattenberg. So do we, I don't know if you know off the top of your head, what is our price from Dominion right now per kilowatt hour, or is that hard to say?
Yeah, our price is about nine cents. They're at seven cents with this PPA. That's because they've locked into that 25-year term, and there are a lot of variables and adjustments to that rate, but on average, that's what's used as a benchmark.
Right, understanding. It's highly complex, but I wonder if we could get maybe, and I'll ask it as a budget question, a ballpark comparison of, you know, what that 1.4 million would look like if we were at the rate of, you know, the PPA price that we could possibly get, and using one that's, you know, right next door. But I'll ask that.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
All right, and then one other thing. Nope, that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have Ms. Evans to be followed by Karen Kizkamara and Mr. Dernak-Kofax, and bottom chair.
Thank you, Dr. Brabrin, for your excellent presentation. It is heartening to see that we appear to have turned a corner. We went through some very, very difficult budget times, so it's good to see that we're on more stable ground now. And I want to thank you too for your work with the county executive and the board of supervisors.
You're welcome.
For getting us to where we are. I will say, just as a general statement, I support the emphasis on teacher pay and employee salaries. I do think that this board has made clear that's where we, it's important to go. So I'm glad to see that in here in a very major way. I did want to get a clarification. Will what you've put in the budget give us our last piece of the investment in the salaries?
We believe so, yes. For the teacher scale enhancements, yes. We believe this is the final installment.
The final.
To get our teachers where they need to be, to finish the multi-year work that this board began.
Because we did a couple of steps last year.
Yep.
We accelerated it last year.
We accelerated it.
That would be great if we could complete the process with the salary scales, because that's certainly a...
Yes, ma'am.
A major initiative. I think it's, of course, I very much appreciate the parent liaison piece in there. I'm glad to see that we're continuing that work for those critical employees. And the living wage, I certainly am glad to see that we're making progress on the living wage. Do we know, at one point, we got a report that showed that we only had a few employees that were under that. that were under that. I would love to see, it doesn't have to be tonight, you know, where we stand in terms of.
Sure, we can get that for a work session.
The living wage, because I do think we have to get to the point where every employee is at the living wage, and I know there are different definitions, and we need to talk about that as well.
Okay.
A couple of general questions. You mentioned Avid going into elementary schools, in Title I schools, are you saying in all of our Title I schools?
No, 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 just to begin, to begin to look at. We haven't designated a school yet.
Okay.
But I think it's appropriate to begin to look at programs that have worked, how we can start to extend those at all levels. And Avid really, I think way back, well, Falls Church was one of the forerunners.
Yes.
For the Avid program and had tremendous success. And the earlier that we start with the interventions for kids necessary for them to have academic and achievement success, we need to do it. So there are now, at the national level, Avid models for the elementary school, and I think it's time for Fairfax County to be innovative and start to look at that kind of program at the elementary school level.
Well, I'm certainly a supporter of Avid, and if we can get those into our Title I schools, that would be wonderful.
Okay.
On another piece on the world languages, it looks like we're expanding them for the work session. I would like to see an update of the report where we saw where the languages were, and particularly if there are any where we're considering having a reduction, you know, while we're moving forward with expansion.
Okay.
I hope we'll see none where we're reducing, but if we are, I think the board needs to be aware of any place where they're losing language. And then for the staffing reserve, that certainly, I'm very glad that we're going to put more money into the staffing reserve. At the same time, I think it's imperative that we make sure that all of our needs-based staffing that schools are entitled to, that they get, that it's not cut back in any way.
Absolutely.
I hope that's part of what we are doing here.
Absolutely. No school will be held, every, no school will be hurt under this adjustment. No school will be, you know, we will, we expect, for any, for the initial analysis, we've done, any school that looked like we would be, they would be losing staffing, we have held them harmless. And many students are going to see, again, on average across the whole division, a class size reduction at the staffing time of about, almost one and a half kids, 1.4 kids.
And would that be across the board at our high-poverty schools and our low-poverty schools?
I haven't looked at that distribution by each individual school. But I think what we're doing is schools in the past have sometimes had to wait to the staffing reserve time to sort of get the staffing that I think they need, and we weren't staffing the elementary model the same way we were staffing the middle and high school. And I think that equity lens, frankly, for our staffing model, needs to be the same. You all had made a policy around staffing, staffing guidelines at elementary, but we were really, we had a little different number that we were dividing by, so everybody was getting a little bit less. We need to give the, we need to give that staffing upfront to our schools during the spring hiring season.
I agree with that. I also think that, to the extent that we can help the, that it's not just lowering class sizes at the high end, that we do need to make sure that while we're doing that, that the high-poverty schools continue to get, continue to get needs-based and hopefully
additions to that too, because, you know, there's a reason we have needs-based, and
it's been a board philosophy and policy for a very long time. So I'm glad to hear they're not going to lose, that hopefully they will gain, that the high-poverty schools will gain as well. We had discussed as a board considering mobility in the formula, is that something that is?
That's not in this year's, that is part of our strategic look. I've asked Marty and Lee to begin to look at all of our formulas, including looking at whether we would want to bring mobility in. And I know we've talked about it, but it's trying to, in a large system, how many things to change at once and to really look at the formulas. It's certainly a discussion under staffing initiatives, we have the $6 million placeholder. I think the question is, would we substitute out mobility for something else, or will we add mobility in as a layer for some additional staffing? And I think that's a conversation we can have between now, frankly, and the approval of the budget. I haven't done an analysis of that. We did last year, as you remember, we did bring you a list of the top schools by mobility.
Yes.
And some would surprise you about where mobility is, and some of our military-related places, even where FRM may not be as high as some others, we have a high mobility rate. I think actually Fort Belvoir is our highest mobility school in the county. But we could certainly look at that as like an add-on or a substitute for. So I left that $6 million in placeholder really for the board to have a chance, to have discussions amongst yourselves about, while we wanted to get the compensation, because that's the biggest message I have for you tonight, we want to get the teacher pay right, you wanted it for multiple years. How do we begin to tweak our staffing initiatives, our staffing programs, our staffing formulas for an equity focus? $6 million's not enough, and with all the things that I know the board will want, it won't be enough, but it can help really create a pathway for where future budgets are going to go. And I told principals today, I met with all the principals earlier this afternoon, that that is the next step. We get the pay right, and then it's time to dive deeply and strategically into our formulas, into our programs, to make sure we're maintaining a world-class school system.
I would welcome the more conversation about the mobility cranking into the formula. That can make a critical difference at a school, having a quarter of your students different at the end of the year than they were at the beginning, having students come in and go out. I mean, it just changes the dynamic.
Okay.
And I think we need to recognize that schools in that situation have unique needs.
Okay.
And I guess my last question for tonight, and again, this is something that we can discuss when we have the budget work session. You talked about $5 million, I believe it was $5 million for the mental health piece, and what all is, if you could give us a little bit more detail about what that entails?
Yeah, I can get you, I can get you all the details. The 2.9 that I talked about, that was, that came at the end of the last year as a reoccurring quarterly adjustment, and we're putting it in now permanently into the budget. I believe that was around our middle school supports for school psychologists and counselor, but I'll verify that, that we gave some additional staffing at our middle schools, and we gave them flexibility on whether they wanted an additional school counselor or psychologist. And I'll verify by the time of the work session, but I believe that's what it is.
We'd love to see more details. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. I now call on Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a few questions for clarification.
Okay.
There are certain advocacies I'll be making later at work session, however, for tonight, just going to ask you a couple of questions.
Okay.
Clarification only. That enrollment projection adjustment of $6.3 million, is that, is that number of students decreasing compared to the number projected at the time we adopted FY19 budget? Is that, I guess, let me ask you this way, is the number for FY20 that you are projecting is about $6.3 million less of expenditure compared to FY19 approved budget? Is that what you mean?
Yes, that's correct.
Which also is translated into, because back in November of 2018, when you were talking about FY20 budget planning, at that time, we were projecting to be using another $5.9 million additional cost to deal with enrollment demographic change. Is that correct?
That's correct, because we.
So swing is, swing is about $12.2 million.
Exactly.
Okay, that's a healthy number. The next point of clarification that I'm seeking is that $84.4 million of county transfer request, what's the percentage increase in transfer?
4.1.
4.1. And I don't see the sum of those numbers on page 14, whether there was intentional or oversight, or you were just testing our brain to be able to calculate those, or?
Okay.
We can get those totaled.
Okay. My calculation came out to be 120 million, 120.3 million if I add up those numbers, which exceeds 117.4 million additional expenditure we need by about $30 million.
2.8.
Are we talking about 2.9?
2.8. It's the textbook reserve that's not appropriated dollars, but it is funded by the county transfer that is the difference.
Okay, you lost me right there, but I'm only comparing, trying to compare 117.4 we need for FY20, based upon superintendent's proposed budget, compared to the revenue that's going to be available, based upon what I see on slide number 14, which is 120.3 million, which means we have a $2.9 million of surplus being, then you, I'm completely lost with these numbers. You can perhaps explain to be offline or at the work session.
Okay.
Because I just see more revenue on 14 than what you need from the other slides of 117.4.
Okay, we'll clarify that after work.
I'm not complaining about surplus, all right? Because I have some advocacies I can make where the expenditure should go to, but I just want to make sure that I understand the numbers correctly. Hopefully that's a fair request.
It is, thank you, Mr. Moon.
Okay, with that, I can wait until January 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Keys Kamara.
Thank you, Dr. Brabran.
You're welcome.
I too want to applaud you for the right focus on compensation for our teachers and staff in particular. And I know that we've done a market study for, to look at those salaries, but I believe there was a request when I came on board for leadership staff, a market study for that, and I'm not sure where we are on that, but certainly at some point would like to be able to have those numbers informed as well.
Yes, we're finishing that work up, and I'll be able to figure out, work with the chair and vice chair, figure out the appropriate way to update.
Great, great. So I'm also, I'm going to, there wasn't a breakdown on the numbers I saw, and you mentioned that there was, there were numbers to deal with discipline and behavior interventions and things like that. I would just like a little bit more breakdown as to, I didn't see a number beside that, it was kind of grouped in with other things.
Yeah, it was 200,000 for the position, position benefits, and I think, I don't know, do you remember, Lee, whether there was any additional thing? Was that just position and benefits and some additional office setup?
Yes, the bare minimum, that, the office setup and the position and benefits.
Right. I recognize, this is just another one where I'm trying to be proactive and recognize the board would get a report in June, and then you'd be, well, the budget's already passed, and what are we going to do?
So it's a placeholder.
So in a way, it's a placeholder, but I believe a position to help coordinate that work is essential for this division.
Well, I appreciate it, I just wanted to make sure I understood what.
And I'll actually remind the board, we have, from the hearing officer discussion, $100,000 that we have carried over, and we said we would wait for that June report. So I really have in the budget right now a position and an additional 100,000 that's still being carried through in this budget, that may help inform what we can do in terms of our discipline recommendations.
Okay. Along those same lines, I didn't see a breakdown for ACE, and.
Okay.
I saw 100,000 for skip, which I would like to see more for that, quite frankly, I'm sure we all like to, but I was actually given our discussions on ACE, I was surprised to see it included in that particular category, so I'd like to, we can have further discussions about that.
Okay.
And I will reserve the remainder of my questions, too.
One clarification, we took the skip recommendation, and that was the budget request that they asked of us, is that correct, Tammy and Megan?
Yes, that's correct. That was what we, the skip committee had come to us and the school board and the board of supervisors, asking for specific amounts. And we can get that to you off the top of my head.
So there is a county piece too, and we.
Yeah, there's a county piece.
We agree.
I'm just looking for more kids in preschool.
I got you.
That's my ultimate goal.
I got you.
So Ms. Strauss, please.
Thank you very much, Dr. Brabran. This is an excellent budget, this is a good news budget.
Thank you.
We are going forward, and the emphasis on competitive salaries is very much appreciated. I just want to thank all of my colleagues, because there have been many discussions to make sure that Dr. Brabran understood people's large ideas and objectives. And I think that this reflects it, and you were trying to be proactive, and to upfront attempt to cover as much of the needs that we all see together for our school division. So I think you all have done an excellent job, and I appreciate Ms. Burton's and Mr. Smith's eyes, because we see some different approaches that I think are very welcome. So thank you very much for that. The one piece that lies ahead of us is that the additional funding from the state comes principally from the governor's proposed budget. And so there is debate at the state level as to whether or not that's going to be fully funded. So I would urge that we advocate that that budget actually be passed, because he has proposed additional allocations for education. And it is very welcome that some of that money would actually come to Fairfax County, because very often, certainly in the times past, either there was no extra money for us, and by various formulas in the LCI, we just never quite benefited. But this year, there is additional money that would come to us, but the governor's introduced budget has to be passed. So that advocacy will be very important.
And Ms. Strauss, if I can say, and I can get that for the board later, the governor's budget is a significant delta of millions of dollars more for Fairfax County public schools. This is not about $100,000 here or there. The governor is giving Fairfax County in his proposed budget millions more, and we'll get that specific number. We need that governor's proposed budget to pass to be able to keep the very narrow gap we have right now of less than $3 million between the budget and what our available revenues would be to enact this budget.
Exactly. And part of, and I know part of the thinking is, the state recognizes that Virginia has not been in a position to allocate sufficient dollars to kindergarten through college and university. The investment is not great in Virginia, and this is an attempt, I think, to move forward. Also, the recognition that the economic well-being of Northern Virginia and Fairfax County is very much dependent on the quality of our schools. Absolutely, we hear that from the business community as well as our leaders in the state. So again, we very much need this additional allocation from the state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. Out of, I guess, consideration for my colleagues as well as staff, I will keep my remarks very brief tonight, knowing that we have the work sessions. But I do want to also prepare my colleagues that even though this is an absolutely great news budget, and certainly appreciate your leadership on this, Dr. Brabran, and your staff working with you, and the collaboration with the county, in the seven years I've been on the board, I came on just as this county was trying to adjust to a very long and painful recession. And then from that point forward, starting in 2012, we had a lot of fluctuation in the economic stability of the county and the Commonwealth. So I look at that this is great news budget, as was last year. As we know by watching the national forecast on the economy, I just want to make sure that we as a school division are really thinking about the fact that while this year we can have our needs met, we have to prepare for the economic uncertainty, and what are we doing to, again, protect the most vital services that we have in our school system's budget? I do also want to just offer sort of a macro-level thought for everyone to consider. I think of the Goldilocks analogy of a little too much, a little too little, and just right. And the PowerPoint I felt is a little too little. There's just not enough information in the PowerPoint. It's very high-level, but it doesn't provide some of the details that your very helpful remarks that you spoke to tonight. And while I've been told that it was attached to something that was sent to the board, working off of my iPad, I can't access those, so I'm going to be looking for a way to get them. But I'm thinking about.
We'll take care of that.
Oh, I had no doubt.
I want you to know, we'll come in, and in fact, I want to be sure every board member has some of the additional detail that I provided you, because that's critical, and we'll be sure to make it. we'll be sure to make it available in any way that it needs to be made.
No, I appreciate that, and I certainly have every expectation that what we need as Board members, you've always been very helpful to provide to us. I'm just thinking from the public's perspective, that the little too much is, I saw on our website, we post the 16-page PowerPoint, and then we post, I think it's like a 200-page document on the budget. And so I'm sort of looking at something in between, in terms of the really thoughtful work that you and your staff have done about the budget. I don't think the PowerPoint tells the story yet, and I don't think our community can spend time going through 200 pages to find the good news of this budget. So I'll send some thoughts and an email to you and my colleagues, but I was just thinking that maybe it's something in marrying your remarks tonight, where there was a little more detail. But I do think that one of the ways that we ensure the public can appreciate the hard work that you've put into this proposed budget, they've got to have a little bit more of that good news than what's necessarily in the PowerPoint.
We'll be glad to provide the transparency that this Board feels is necessary to make sure you're ready and comfortable, and the community's comfortable, and investing in what this budget proposal looks like.
And again, I know transparency is an important word for all of us, but I want to use a more positive word as well, which isn't just about transparency, it's about telling the story--
Sure.
--in a way that the public can appreciate where our commitments are.
Sure.
But then also help, enable them to help us get their best thinking, to then help us give you our best thinking, and then hopefully ensure that the budget we then send over to the Board of Supervisors is the strongest possible. I also want to just take a moment on two things, because I think it's important to say tonight. I smiled when I heard you take special care in your remarks to mention school nurses as part of your focus, because that was something, as Ms. Strauss said, you listened to individual Board members, and we talked about how we can strengthen our school system. It is something that, where I've been concerned, we average about one nurse, school nurse per 3,000 students in Fairfax County, and it's been recommended that it should be closer to 500 to 750. So it is very encouraging to know that, you know, you've got 12 Board members to listen to, and the fact that that was referenced.
Thank you.
And then certainly, as a social worker who's been championing along with virtually everyone on this Board, to restore and enhance our staffing for social workers and psychologists, I appreciate that you highlighted that here tonight as well. The only other thing that I just kind of want to put on everybody's radar is that when we had a meeting with our elementary school principals, that wonderful gathering, just to meet and greet, it was shared with me some concerns that, as we all know, in our 150 elementary schools, they vary greatly in size. Some can be as small as a few hundred, some can be well over 1,000, and are almost in size to a middle school. So I, I'm hoping, as we have this budget dialogue, that at some point, we can have that thoughtful conversation about pay equity for our elementary school principals, because I think that as employees and as very loyal leaders to you, Dr. Braybrand, they aren't going to necessarily go advocating that on their own individually, but I do think it's something we have to.
Well, if I could share, I do appreciate that, and I actually even have, you know, the too much, too little is one of those, I think, challenges for a superintendent in how to tell the story. I want to be sure the public listens in long enough to hear the good news of the budget, which is really one of the main messages and the investment in teachers. But we've got to figure out the right balance to give you and the public the details necessary to help make good decisions. But a note I wanted you to know and hear, the work we've done around BA lanes the last two years is a construct that I'm going to use. I've listened to elementary principals, they have concerns going back 15 years about equity and pay. We're going to pull together a working group. We've done some initial work, we feel there's a little bit more work to do, but we want to bring in our elementary, middle, and high school principals for the conversation, and really do some deeper work and have deeper conversations and deeper study. And I told them today, all the principals at all levels, that I would do that work, not just to look at principal pay, but even at elementary, excuse me, even at assistant principal staffing. We've started to study trades, what do schools trade for? Ms. Evans, you know, you've talked about needs-based staffing. We actually see needs-based staffing from an administrative lens, that some of our maybe higher needs-based schools are training for an additional administrator, given the demands that are placed on those schools administratively. But we've never had a needs-based staffing lens, frankly, when we looked at our support and administrative staffing. So I think there's some conversations to have. I'm going to pull a working group and have Marty work to lead that, just like we did with BA lanes, and have some ideas and recommendations to inform the FY21 budget. That's at least my plan that I shared with them today, and I think it will give us the thoughtful, deliberative approach that you all have asked for, like on school discipline, on AAP, and I want to do that. Some of this goes back years and years, and I want to get whatever we're going to do right. And a lot has changed in 15 years. We have elementary schools with more than 1,000 kids now in Fairfax County. That was never the case when I started here. So I think we need to take a fresh look, and I told them today I would, and they did appreciate the candor in which I said, no, it's not in this budget, but I'll commit to do a review and have recommendations for next year's.
That's encouraging, and, you know, I do hope also we'll look at school divisions benchmarking, both regionally and around the country, on how they handle that, especially, again, when you see such a variability in size and responsibilities. And then finally, I want to do a shout-out to Mr. Plattenberg, because, again, I know your leadership team, they're all team players, and they want to support the best budget possible. But I know in the seven years I've been here, and in fact, Mr. Plattenberg inherited this, a real stripping away of the annual maintenance that we've needed, so I don't know if I missed that in there, but if not, I do hope that'll be part of our dialogue, is restoring annual maintenance needs.
So let me share that. I had the placeholder of $6 million for staffing initiatives, and said that in future budgets, we've got to start to look at the staffing formulas. Some school divisions, some school divisions have a formula that drives support for facilities and maintenance around student enrollment. Fairfax doesn't. But again, that's just something, that's a deeper thing. It's the way we've done business here, year after year after year. We've grown, we've grown, we've grown, and we've had to keep support operations like that flat, or frankly, we've even cut them over the last 10 years. Do we need to build in a staffing formula that's dynamic, that really, just like staffing, automatically if enrollment goes up? We do that for schools, but we don't do it for our support organization. Do we need to create a dynamic formula that does that? And that's a conversation I think we need to have. We may need to have it sooner, frankly, from Mr. Plattenberg's position, and maybe from Board, but to begin to look at formulas that some other systems do, that student enrollment doesn't just drive the instructional program staffing, but it also drives support and administrative and facility and maintenance staffing.
Yeah, I still do think, though, that we're talking about just the overall annual maintenance in a school division where we are grossly underfunded for our capital improvements, we're having to then do our Band-Aid approach of just trying to do repairs as needed. And so I'm less concerned about that kind of staffing as by enrollment, it's more about having someone like Mr. Plattenberg, who's going to be the subject matter expert on our facilities, to say, where do we strategically need maintenance funding that we just haven't had enough funding to do? And finally, I will also say that I think, my colleagues, we know that we have not been able to do enough on boundary adjustments, and Mr. Plattenberg's shop doesn't have enough people in there for the 10th largest school system in the country. And if we're going to be able to start looking at underutilized buildings and overutilized buildings, and how do we address and remedy that, that takes people, so--
We can talk about that.
I ended up taking more time than I meant to, but I am looking forward to using this budget, and I guess my parting words to my colleagues is, it would be very easy to say, oh, we got everything we need, no work to be done this year. I think this is actually one of the best years we could try and do some work to refine and ensure that our money is going in the best direction possible.
I want to clarify for the Board that that $6 million for staffing initiatives that had possibilities leaves you room for some flexibility for these exact conversations on work sessions that are coming up through the spring, and ideas that you're sharing at the DIAS now, that we can still incorporate into the budget before it's approved in May.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you.
I call on Ms. Palchuk.
Thank you. Well, I'm glad I get to follow Ms. McLaughlin, because this afternoon, I had the opportunity to meet for about an hour and a half with the Facility Services Employees Advisory Council, and those are exactly the kind of concerns that, they are dedicated, as you know, long-term staff, and I believe about half of them are up for retirement in the next five years. So there are a lot of concerns, and really, they wanted a chance to meet, I think it was the first time they invited a Board member, and I recommended, please, you know, don't feel shy. I think they would love the opportunity to meet with, and I encourage them to share their comments with us at the hearings and in writing. So I do want to have this conversation sooner rather than later, and a few of the main concerns, I thought we were working at $100 million backlog. It is up to $157 million maintenance backlog. It has gone up every single year in the past five years. And so not only is that concern around safety, it is a huge budget concern, because that increases our deferred maintenance. And I don't know if the community is aware that we use our school buildings 17 hours a day. I know when Karen Garza came in, she was just shocked at how much we use our school facilities for community use, and how little that very minimal fee covers, really just a few hours of custodial services, and not the fact that by the time our gym floors have been redone, they have to be redone again. The summer use, the weekend use, the evening use, and this is something we want, it's our community space. But I think we need to have that conversation with our colleagues on the Board of Supervisors, with your counterparts, to make the community aware of exactly, right, what this means, that this is not just used by our schools. And the fact that use is really not, that the maintenance costs and the wear and tear is in no way covered, and that we bear that burden, and it comes out of our classroom size, our teacher funding, this is our operating budget that has to cover that. And so I do, I don't know the best way to have this, but some of these questions, and I just had the meeting today, so I will be bringing these, but a few that came out of there is that, I believe our recommend, the recommended custodial staffing is one per 49,000 square feet, and we are at one per 90,000 square feet, if that's correct, Mr. Plattenberg. We, the need for custodial services, we only have 22 field custodians available daily for the entire county--
That's right.
If any custodian is ever out in a school, there are only 22 for the entire school system. That is five times the size of the Pentagon. So these are the kinds of things that, yes, especially, and I agree with Ms. McLaughlin, this is the year we've been cutting and cutting this budget, that we really need to address that. And some of them are smaller, simpler requests, our apprentice program, I believe we used to have 50 apprentices, I believe we are down to perhaps six. It is not a huge cost, around $39,000 a year, to bring students who come out of Edison and our other academies--
Absolutely.
--and to have them apprentice, and be ready, and learn all this knowledge that in the next five years, we're about to lose in this county. And not only is it helpful in that way, my understanding is, when our trades folks go out, and we, I believe, only have 20 grounds folks, is that correct, for the entire county? 20 people, that's about the size of a custodial staff in one high school, to cover all the grounds in all of our schools in the entire county. And when our trades people have to go out in pairs, it could be one tradesperson and one apprentice, right? And now we have two tradespeople, because there are not enough apprentice positions. And so those are smaller budget requests, those are definitely, I think, something we could fulfill this year. $39,000 per position seems like a no-brainer, right? Especially as we talk about having, you know, building our own, making it efficient, and having opportunities for our kids, this portrait of a graduate that we talk about--
Absolutely.
--and to build our own. So I really hope that we can definitely make room for that. Our custodial services, I know, I've talked to some of our custodians in our schools, they are just working to the bone.
Yes.
And we really need to find a way to help support them, to keep our schools safe and clean. They do everything they can. So I will be meeting with Mr. Plattenberg, and I'm happy to meet with colleagues to figure out how we can address that, and then, and to revisit that staffing formula. I agree with Ms. McLaughlin, I believe the Gibson Report in 2013 made recommendations that we have not been able to fund. And as our schools have grown, our staff, Mr. Plattenberg's staff has been flat. So we really, I agree with you, Ms. McLaughlin, absolutely need to do that. I recommend, I hope they reach out to us soon, and I will share that, but I will be working with staff on amendments, or a way to, I guess, once we get more details on your budget--
Sure, absolutely.
--how we work within the budget, because it is just not sustainable. And then, so that's the big one. Thank you for sharing that, Ms. McLaughlin. And then, you know, I do, I thank you for including the living wage, the clarity, I'd like some more clarity on the bonuses versus MSA for our top-of-scale, and I guess that's a conversation we can have.
Okay, sure.
I heard you mention interpreter/translator services. I know I had that, so I'd like to get more clarity if we're providing more support, because I think that's an area that I've heard that we have a great need. The one thing, I don't know if you mentioned it, is around IAs. Is that included at all in the budget, some kind of investment in our IAs?
I don't think anything additional beyond the change that we made in the salary scales to our folks last year.
Okay.
But I recognize, and have had conversations with Just stack earlier this week, which is our teacher representatives, that there still remains ongoing concerns. Do we have the right size? One thing I want to share with the Board, last year, we moved all of our US folks, right, our non-teachers, to new scales. We didn't go position by position to do, look at some of those, even in finer detail, are there still some aberrations as we move to the market? And there may be things like that, where we're still not where we need to be, and we'd be glad to have those kind of conversations with the Board and work with Dr. Nixon and her staff as we, you know, hone in on a particular job and make sure we really did get it right when we did the market conversion over to these salary scales.
And that would be helpful, especially in those conversations with Dr. Johnson around inclusion and how we do it well, and the role that our IAs really play in our special ed classrooms. So I hope we can have that conversation. And finally, I invite my colleagues, January 28th, I will be down in Richmond early, because we have to come back for our, I believe, our budget work session, but that is the day of the rally, showing support for this Governor's budget, because I think, I agree, this is incredible, we need this budget. I have not seen a number above 20% for state funding, I believe, in a while. So while it's not where we would like it to be, I do hope that we can grab that bus, or however we decide to go down there, and get support for the budget, because it is not finalized yet. So thank you, thank you to your staff, and I look forward to our work sessions on this.
So with that, I'm going to take the Chair's privilege, but I'm going to do it out of order, because the Chair of the Budget, Ms. Darren Kofax, is going to be the final speaker on this. First, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Braybrand, thank you, Ms. Burton, thank you, Mr. Smith. You all have done a wonderful job. You've reinvented the way we do budgets in Fairfax County Public Schools.
Thank you.
So we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
It is a very proactive, collaborative approach, where you've reached out to us in advance of presenting a budget, and I will tell you, this is the first time in my time on the Board that I've seen that happen. The other thank you is, we've begun the process of aligning the budget with our strategic plan. And when you look at priorities, you need to look at how we spend our money, and that will show our priorities. And the top priority here is investing in our people. So thank you.
You're welcome.
It really is a restorative budget. We are restoring where we need to be. I hope that when we look at it over the next couple of months with my colleagues, that we will look at it as a restorative and sustainable budget, because, you know, with fluctuations in our economy, it's always important to say, you know, what's the best use of limited resources? And by linking it to our strategic plan and our strategic-- And by linking it to our strategic plan and our strategic priorities, we should be able to make the argument that even in lean times, we need both the governor and our Board of Supervisors to get behind us on this. So thank you. I do have a couple of questions.
Okay.
So you, first, I want to reiterate something. I don't know if my colleagues saw in the Wall Street Journal today, an article about how across the nation, births are down and have been declining over the past couple of years. So it's no surprise that here in Fairfax County, our births are down. However, the, what's interesting is, is that the rate of birth to K, to kindergarten, it has been consistent at 85%. So that is an affirmation that people believe in the value of our schools, so I am very appreciative of that. And when you look at your, the budget you've put forth, I really appreciate that even with a slight dip in births, we still have that commitment to preschool initiatives. And so thank you for adding in the VPI.
You're welcome.
Plus, as well as the continued funding for those safety and security measures that we adopted last summer. I am going to, and I appreciate that my colleague, Ms. Keys-Gamar, raised the question about the supports for discipline. So getting a little bit more detail on that would be greatly appreciated. I am relieved that it is in positive behavior supports and not in adding more punitive measures or hearing officers, from what I can tell. So thank you. I also would like to understand a bit more about the equity supports that you've got in the budget.
Okay.
And so you don't have to answer these tonight, but I will want to know a little bit more on, at our work session. And another area is on the bus replacement. And this follows up on our resolution this past October. And I apologize, my colleague, Ms. Hines, may have raised this already. I had to step away from the table due to a health emergency of somebody, but that's all been resolved. Bus replacements, are we looking at putting in criteria for the bus replacements for energy-efficient bus replacements in the form of perhaps renewables, hybrids? Somebody spoke at the CIP about, hearing the other night, about possibly solar-powered buses. And so it would be very nice to better understand how we are going to build in our climate resolution priorities into how we purchase vehicles.
Okay. We can have that for the work session and maybe scope some of that out then. Does that sound good, Mr. Plattenberg?
Yes, sir. We've done that previously, and we'll be happy to go ahead and incorporate that as Superintendent Braybrand said.
Excellent. So, Dr. Braybrand, with that, once again, I very much appreciate your creative input into how we're doing budgets now, as well as your whole team, and thank you. I look forward to further discussions on it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Ms. Darinak Kofax, you get the last word.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we were copying off of each other's papers, but I know we can't see them. Your words are very much the same as mine. So, Dr. Braybrand, thank you for this presentation tonight. We really do appreciate this Good News Budget. Thank you, Mr. Smith, Ms. Burden, and Ms. Wiggington, and your teams for putting together tonight's proposed budget. I know how hard you worked, and I do appreciate the, Alice is back there.
Yeah.
Hi.
Alice does an amazing job. You know, Alice, can you just stand and just wave to the board? Come on, you do an amazing, amazing job. And she has been a rock for us as we prepare the budget and really has some of the institutional knowledge. Marty and Lee have caught a new end of that, and Alice has just been an inspiration. So thank you for acknowledging her tonight.
Absolutely.
Very much.
She has always been that way, and I'm glad to have her as part of this new team as we move forward. Thank you, Ms. Strauss, for your assistance, and again, your lens as we work through the budget process as the Vice Chair. And to all my colleagues for your two-by-two meetings. Sharing your thoughts and priorities did help Dr. Braybrand and his team formulate, you know, what he heard from all of you. And if you find that process continued to be helpful, we can do that once again during this tenure. We can do it after, I would think, the work session and perhaps maybe after the public hearing, because there's quite a long way to go. But I'll kind of wait to hear from all of you if that's something you'd like to do, because I do think that first round was helpful. And I appreciate, even though it takes a little time, I think it's a good thing. Personally, there are so many things about this budget that I like, and that's the first time that I can say that as the Chair, as the Budget Chair for our board. So thank you.
You're welcome.
My top three include just what Ms. Corbett Sanders, it's so funny, our continued focus on ensuring that our teachers and employees have competitive salaries and targeted career earnings between 95 and 105%. And we think that we're going to be there this year. So that's great. Again, the alignment of the budget dollars with a strategic plan, that is very important. And that is somewhere where I'm so happy we can be. And I think, you know, we, those of us who had been around for the beginning of the strategic plan, part of the reason, in some ways, that it wasn't aligned, it was always a cut, cut, cut budget. There were no blue-sky opportunities. So we are excited about this, and, you know, talking about blue-sky, we talked about this in our budget meetings, that this budget has a restorative feel to it. We're not doing everything that we need to be doing. We do feel we are at a place where there's the possibility of new initiatives, and it's not one field with cuts that gives, from tonight through May, a feeling of angst with the community. We are not there, and I am so happy not to be there. So thank you all for working together to do that. Thank you for working with your partners at the county level, and I look forward to continue talks with our board and the Board of Supervisors to continue to move forward on this. We've heard many times tonight, but I just want to reiterate that the first work session in the evening is January 22nd, beginning at 6:00 p.m. The public hearing is the, what, the 28th, and 28th to the 30th? And, yes, public hearing, the 28th to the 30th, that will be here at Luther-Jackson. And I do want to mention, there's lots of so many positive things, but one thing I think Ms. McLaughlin said about the, just finding new ways to try to present the material, that I did mention to you that we did all get the Dr. Braybrand's talking points. That was something that I always feel that was necessary, and I appreciate you sharing that with the board right up front. I don't, we can share that with the public, I don't think that's necessary. But one thing I think that did help me, and you all can decide how best to do this, but being the Chair, the Budget Chair, and now the Budget Chair again, often asked to go out to community meetings. We had like two pagers with graphs, some of the highlighted points.
We have that.
Okay.
Do we have that tonight, John? Do we have that tonight?
The two-pager is posted to the budget page. So if you click the link, it's right there on the budget page.
We actually have hard copies too.
Okay.
Sorry, Maybeth, no, okay.
Well, that would be great. That's something that I always found helpful, and we will, I will look forward to my hard copy after this. But thank you for all your hard work, and I look forward to my colleagues and as we continue on this restorative path.
Thank you very much. It's an honor, again, to serve as your Superintendent, and I look forward to the budget process.
I would love to let you leave the dais at this point, but we do have one go back, Ms. McLaughlin.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back just for clarity, because I appreciate what Ms. Kofax was saying, that we, the board, got your notes attached to the PowerPoint. But in case I wasn't clear to my colleagues and to the public, what I was saying is, I think we need a document that is more than just the PowerPoint slides, but not the 200 pages. I don't necessarily think we need his talking points. I'm saying I think we might want to just have some sort of document that sort of provides the details that were within his talking points. There's a lot of really good numbers.
I understood that, and I was kind of reading that up, but I was making the point that there was a two-pager that used to happen, and I always found that great for community meetings, and they already created that.
And if I could add something from the table here, we will be providing the board that level of detail and preparation for the work session. So that was the intent all along, to ensure that you had that and that the public had that level of detail. So we will be providing that to the board prior to the work session so that you're well-prepared, and then we'll have that discussion at the work session.
And I will remind my colleagues with that, that we will have two work sessions on this. They will be on the 22nd and the 31st, and we will have public hearings starting on the 28th of this month at 6:00 p.m. And you will be able to register to speak, beginning at 6:00 a.m. tomorrow morning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. And we also, tonight, actually have added one additional item to the consent agenda, which we typically have every meeting, but it got, it fell off this one, and it's now being put back on, which is appointments to committees. So I will now read the consent agenda. 6.01, authorize the Division Superintendent and the Assistant Superintendent, Department of Facilities and Transportation Services, either of whom may act without the other, to take all action necessary and appropriate, in consultation with legal counsel for the School Division, to negotiate, execute, grant, and administer such deeds and agreements, as well as any other documents, to grant certain easements on the property of Liberty Middle School to the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors, and to receive in return from the adjoining landowner, certain easements for the benefit of Liberty Middle School and the School Division. Item 6.02, award a contract for the Northwest Elementary School New School Project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Hess Construction Plus Engineering Services, Inc., in the amount of $27,080,000, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the School Board. Item 6.03, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda?
Some, Madam Chair, just for clarification, since we don't have that agenda for 6.03, could we name the appointee?
Yes, I will actually call on Ms. Pouchak to provide those details.
Sure. I assume it doesn't have to be a formal motion, but I will be appointing Ms. Jenny Bay to serve as the Providence District Representative to ACSD.
Thank you, Ms. Pouchak. Are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objections, the consent agenda is approved. Now for new business. Following our new business agenda items, there will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 7.01, fiscal year 2020 proposed budget. Superintendent Matters. Next on the agenda is Superintendent Matters, and I call on Dr. Braybrand.
Thank you, Chairman Corbett Sanders. I want to share just a couple of quick things. First, we have eight students that were named 2019 Regeneron Science Talent Search Scholars. There are eight students from Fairfax County representing Langley, Oakton, and Thomas Jefferson. They've been named scholars. They're part of a group of 300 scholars selected from almost 2,000 entrants in a 2019 competition. The Regeneron Science Talent Search is a program of the Society for Science and the Public. It's the most prestigious in the nation pre-college science competition. And alumni of STS have made extraordinary contributions in science and hold 100 of the world's most distinguished science and math honors, including the Nobel Prize and the National Medal of Science. These 300 scholars will receive matching awards of $2,000, along with their school, and a total of 40 finalists will be announced January 23rd, and they'll get to come to D.C. and participate in judging and displaying of their work, and meet with scientists, including competing for the top award of $250,000. I also want to share with you, we talked about aligning our budget with the strategic plan. It's not important just during budget times, it's important every day in our daily operations. And I believe this week, with the work of this board urging me to work with leadership team, we met on Tuesday, that we've had a crisis in our community, and our leadership team, with the leadership of this board, has reached out. I want to share with you that we shared with the community earlier this week, that we provided a hiring process for substitute teachers for those who are furloughed from the federal government right now. I want you to know that the response has been overwhelming. The first event scheduled for tomorrow has already reached capacity, and it did so in less than 24 hours. A second, yes.
Waiting to hear this.
We will have national and international TV tomorrow at Gate House to film a school district that is modeling the caring culture that the School Board expects for its community. And I appreciate the board. I appreciate the board helping work with me, to work with our leadership team to brainstorm an idea like this that can really help serve our community. We've already created a second event that's scheduled for next Tuesday, here at Gate House, over at Gate House, rather, from 2:00 to 4:30. That event, today, at 4:30, reached full capacity. We are now looking at scheduling a third event to bring in folks to support our community and to have substitute teachers for our young people and our students in classrooms. So we will be following up with that. In the meantime, folks can go to our online application at fcps.edu, and someone from HR will follow up with you. We want and we welcome our friends and neighbors to the FCPS family. Our family is with your family. So we do hope that this will be positive, and we will update you on these events Friday and Tuesday. And there's, of course, additional details at fcps.edu. That's all I have. And again, thank you again for letting me present this budget this evening. I'm excited. And this leadership team has done a tremendous amount of work, both in the budget and in responding to things like the community. I couldn't be prouder of our school system right now. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand. Next on the agenda is Board Matters. Oh, I, do we have any? Yeah, next on the agenda is Board Matters, and I call on Ms. Hines.
Thank you. I believe before the winter holidays, we did receive notice that the Longfellow Middle Chamber Orchestra performed at the 72nd Annual Midwest Clinic International Band and Orchestra Conference in Chicago. And this is one of the highest honors that our orchestras can receive, and they had great kudos. We heard from across the country. So congratulations to the Longfellow Middle School Chamber Orchestra. I will also be meeting with the McLean High School PTSA and probably the entire pyramid on January 17th to talk about the fact that it's time for us to begin to talk about boundary changes between the Longfellow-McLean and Cooper-Langley attendance areas. Langley High School has now finished their renovation, and there is capacity now, as well as at Cooper. And this is why we renovate and expand schools. So it's important that we begin the discussion with the community and begin the planning. We don't have an outcome yet, but now that the Langley renovation is done, it's time to begin to talk about this, to help relieve the overcrowding that is continuing in the McLean Pyramid. And again, I am very pleased to hear that we are offering to hire some of our furloughed federal employees to become substitutes in our school system. We are truly a caring culture in Fairfax County, really excited. And I thank everybody who worked very quickly to put that together, to answer that community need. So congratulations to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Evans?
Thank you, and I also want to congratulate Dr. Braybrand and the staff for being very proactive in dealing with the very real pain that's being created by the federal shutdown and helping our federal workers, and also helping us too by giving us some new substitute teachers. So, that was excellent work, and I look forward to seeing how the third one goes. We may find ourselves with a third and one that's full and needing a fourth. So, thank you for jumping on that, Dr. Braybrand. I want to let my community know that I'm looking forward to meeting with the Mason District PTA Presidents this Sunday. I hope we won't be snowed out, but very much look forward to having that conversation and having all the PTAs from Mason District interact and give each other good ideas and work on issues of interest to all of us. I also wanted to announce that I'm holding office hours on Saturday, January 19th, at the Thomas Jefferson Library on Route 50 from 10:30 to noon on Saturday, January 19th, with Delegate K. Corey. So, I hope everybody comes out and lets me know what's on your mind. Thank you.
Ms. Keys-Gamara.
Thank you. The light didn't go on. It's rare that people say they can't hear me. Anyway, I too want to thank Dr. Braybrand for being so swift in providing this opportunity for substitute teachers and our furloughed workers, but also, I believe we are helping with the lunches of those students as well. So, yeah, I got to say it before he did. That was good. Anyway, but I'm glad that we are doing all that we can, and certainly, we would love to brainstorm to see how we can support our community further. I do hope, did you want to say something?
You did prompt me. I completely forgot. We did share, there will be no lunch shaming. That is continuing a policy. Thank you, Ms. Karen Keys-Gamara, and we'll make sure that, you know, we are not going to have an unpaid balance get in the way of a kid having a healthy breakfast and lunch. And just for the numbers, 200 people tomorrow, 175 on Tuesday, so we're going to have almost 400 people come through Gate House to become substitute teachers in the next four or five days. So, it's not 10 or 20 people coming to a room, oh, it's hundreds of people are coming through, and it's just an exciting chance to serve the community in this way in their time of need. So, thank you.
And I'm grateful that we're doing that. I do hope that everybody, despite difficulties, had a good holiday. I won't hold you. I did have one opportunity to go to the IB graduation for the South Lake students yesterday, and it's quite an arduous process. I'm not quite sure how that fits into the homework policy, but I was, congratulations to them.
Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. I just wanted to share with my colleagues that last night, when I was holding office hours in the Braddock District, it was a unique meeting in that over 20 Boy Scouts, Boy Scout troops, troopers and their parents were there, and ended up being just a great hour-long exchange on the civics of local government, and over 10 of the boys each wanted to ask questions related to the work we do on the school board and our public schools, and they were quite young. All of them were at the elementary school level, and yet, they just had such thoughtful questions. So, technically, I guess they were called Cub Scouts, I need to clarify. So, that was great. And then, I will have office hours next Wednesday at the Braddock District Supervisor's Office Building in the morning from 9:30 to 11:00, and we'll send a note out about that as well. And I also wanted to share with all of you and certainly with Dr. Braybrand that last night, when we, many of us had the chance to do our high school, middle school principals' meet and greet over, also in the Braddock District, that was just really an incredible opportunity, and I'm so pleased that this board and your principals that create, through the association, have created this opportunity to talk with one another. I learned so much about what's happening in other parts of the county, and in particular, I want to shout out to Chantilly Principal Scott Poole and the incredible work that is being done over there with some public-private partnership support, over $100,000 going into an innovation lab that we will all, I'm told, as board members get invited to very soon. But just to see sort of the dynamic learning in this 21st century environment we talk about was great to hear. And then, I had a chance to talk with Longfellow Principal Carol Keen, and her background being in counseling, we certainly had a chance to talk about the importance of the mental health and well-being of kids and just what she continues to do to support that through programs for not just her students, but her employees, and mindfulness in the classroom, even just mindful minutes before they begin instruction in every class. And so, those are things that Dr. Braybrand just made me very appreciative, that we have that type of leadership and that we get a chance to have those more granular conversations and appreciate the good work that's being done. And so, other than that, I just want to say to my colleagues that I know for many of us, for some reason, we came off of the holidays and battled the flu and cold that were coming along with it, so it's good to see everybody was able to be here, and I know our thoughts and good wishes are with our other colleague, Ms. Schultz, who has not been feeling well, and we certainly hope that she will have a speedy recovery soon.
Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, you know, there are three large board members, and sometimes amongst the three of us, we divvy up our work countywide, and I was unable to join you, Ms. Karen Keys-Gamara at South Lakes, but I'll be at Lee High School representing three large board members for IB diploma and career-related certificate coming tomorrow. And Mr. Renakofax may join me, as I understand that, and thank you. And Dr. Braybrand, I really enjoyed the meeting with the middle school and high school principals yesterday, even though I was only able to stay for a little more than half an hour. It's such a precious opportunity to meet with more than just one at a time, a group of very distinguished administrators, and hear directly from them that, how we can improve the education we are providing in Fairfax County Public School System. And for tomorrow evening, I'm going to be stepping out of the boundary of Fairfax County and venture into neighboring school district of Alexandria Public Schools, because there is a special celebration for a former math teacher of mine at TC Williams, Mr. Luis Coconis, celebrating his 60th year of teaching, and he's still going strong. Thanks. I will see you tomorrow, Mr. Coconis.
Mr. Renakofax.
I just want to say welcome back to everybody and Happy New Year. I loved our, he's not here, Benny, he's left, but I really related to his remarks. I think we all did, re-entering after a few weeks out was a little difficult, but you take that first step, and then you can do it. So, and again, I want to add the heap on the praise to Dr. Braybrand and his team about the efforts we're doing to ensure that those who are furloughed with our friends and neighbors, I have several neighbors who I'm seeing out, they're doing positive things. They're exercising, and they're taking many walks during the day, and I don't mean to make light of it at all, but it's extremely, it can be extremely difficult for families, particularly when we're approaching that time where we know the paychecks aren't coming in, and I look to our colleagues across the river to come to some kind of compromise, and I thank you for trying to make a situation that is not something to be laughed at, but something to be very concerned about, and trying to make it a win-win for our school community, as well as those who are currently facing the prospect of not a paycheck in the next week or so. So, thank you for doing that, and I look forward to seeing you tomorrow, Mr. Moon, at Lee High School for their IB confirmation of IB graduates.
Mr. McAfee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be brief because I am sick, but I do want to, on behalf of all of us who have benefited, publicly thank Ms. McLaughlin for her remedies for all sorts of diseases, but most importantly, the sinusitis or whatever I have, but it's been very helpful. So, thank you for that, and you can see the doctor every other Thursday night at this day. And I do also want to recognize the colleague to see to my left, whose birthday is actually tonight, and he's spending it with his best friends here, but on behalf of all of us, happy birthday, Tom, and thank you for joining us.
Ms. Palchuk.
Thank you. Just a couple of brief announcements. First of all, this is a bittersweet congratulations to Principal Lehman, who will be very, very missed here at Luther Jackson Middle School. He's done an incredible job in his tenure here. He's left us in good hands, very good hands, and we wish him the best at Centerville High School. You are very lucky, those board members will get to work with him. He's just a pleasure, and his heart and soul and time and dedication to students will be a gift to Centerville. So, want to thank him for all his service. I also want to give a couple announcements of some upcoming events. The first one is very important, and I know my colleagues to my left also have some students and families in the Mosby Woods-Oakton area, and I want to thank staff and everyone in the community who, to this date, has written, communicated about the efforts to help address the capacity needs through building a new elementary school. I know it is an effect on the community, on the surrounding community. We are listening, we listen to, we have heard your concerns, and there's another activity, our public meeting has been scheduled for next Wednesday, June 16th, at 7:00 PM at Mosby Woods. Staff will be there to present the plan, to answer the questions they have received to date, and to answer any other questions or concerns. I know that a design committee also is underway to help ensure that we have a school that meets the needs of the community, the use for the community, and especially the parks and the traffic and transportation in the area. So, June 16th, next Wednesday, at Mosby Woods. I also will have my office hours this month on a Tuesday, Tuesday, January 22nd, from 4:00 to 5:30 PM at the Panera here in the Mosaic District on Strawberry Lane. So, please come out, no appointment necessary, and would love to hear from you, especially as we go into the budget cycle. And then, finally, as we talk about the state budget, for those who don't have the chance to go down to Richmond, this coming Saturday in Providence District or nearby, actually, we have several of our state legislators will be holding town halls, and it's a very good opportunity to share your thoughts and to help us get support for public education. Saturday morning at 10:00 AM, Delegates Marcus Simon and Senator Sasslaw will hold their town hall at George Mason High School just over in Falls Church, I believe, from 10:00 to 11:30 AM. And in the evening, several of our local legislators will be at the McLean Community Center from, not evening, afternoon, from 3:00 to 4:30 PM. So, especially Providence and Drainsville legislators, I know, including Senator Janet Howell, will be there to hear from you and to share their bills for the session. So, two good opportunities to communicate how much we want the support for Fairfax County Public Schools, and I hope everyone has had a great start to the year.
Now for the birthday boy, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and it is wonderful to be here with my friends on the school board on my birthday, and I do look forward to getting home, however, with my family to celebrate the rest of the birthday evening, so I will keep my comments brief. Thank you all for using brevity in your own remarks. First of all, thanks, thank you very much to the Westfield Troubadours, who I think gave one of the most beautiful renditions of our national anthem tonight that I've heard in a long time, proving that Westfield is much more than just great sports programs and football champions. So, congratulations to that group of young men who obviously have dedicated a tremendous amount of time. As the father of an accomplished singer myself, I know it's not easy and requires a lot of hard work. Thank you also to Dr. Braybrand for the presentation, and most importantly, for the continued focus and emphasis on our teachers. I think that it is great news to hear that focus again this year, and I hope that in the process as we move forward, that we can now begin to think about some of those other factors other than compensation that we need to address to keep our teachers in this county and keep them here for their careers. These are not necessarily always the most obvious things, and I am encouraged, because the third thing I want to thank you for is you're both creative and fast action with regards to our federal employees, and I hope you can bring that same sort of creativity towards working with Ms. Nixon on how we can help address some of those concerns of our teachers. As the brother of a federal employee in Loudoun County, I am deeply grateful for the school system's actions with regards to those federal employees who are furloughed. And thank you, Mr. McAfee, for the birthday wishes. Definitely thank you for that, and you are always very thoughtful and bring a cake to share with the board on birthdays. I do find it a little unusual to be referred to as being to the left of two of my colleagues. However, on this night, I will accept it as a compliment. And Happy New Year to everyone in Fairfax County and all the parents and the Fairfax County School System, and welcome back to all the students.
Ms. Hines.
Okay, I can't not do this. You know, the audience sees you as to the right of most of these folks, right? So, just saying.
That's really news to me.
No, just you're to his left, but they're right. I'm kidding. Anyway, I do, as our student member Benny mentioned, actually, the Reston community suffered a very, very deep loss over the holidays. Daniel Cruz was a South Lake sophomore who was killed in a hit-and-run on Saturday, December 29th. You might have read about it. He was on his way home from work at a local restaurant, and one of the quotes in the paper from one of his friends at school was, "He was really so kind and selfless," and that's how he's remembered. Daniel's mother, younger brother, many friends, and the whole Reston community feel this loss very deeply. I wanted to mention also, as there may be extra need in our community, you know, our students and PTA members at both South Lakes High School and Madison High School have been doing a wonderful job with their food banks, and their food plus, they have all kinds of other things available to students and families in need. So, if you have the ability to give some, just contact either of those schools, whatever's convenient for you, if you live in the area, and, you know, bring what you can. They always have a list of needed items, and I really, I want to thank the folks, especially the students at both of those schools, for all you're doing for your community. And then, just also to thank the students who came to our CIP public hearing this past Thursday, two nights ago, to speak particularly to SolarOn schools and renewable energy. You just, you know, students, you make a difference. You know, we listen to you, we care what you think, especially about something that affects your future so much and so clearly, and I was just really impressed with all that they had to say, their organization, their knowledge, their passion, so keep it up.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. So, I do want to also thank you, Dr. Braybrand, for being so nimble and quick on your feet as a system to have responded to concerns from this board regarding our families and students impacted by the furlough. So, thank you again. And it's pretty exciting to have both of our job fairs totally full. I know that more people are concerned about it, and so, I have been listening and actually reaching out to some of the neighboring school boards, and I am going to urge our federal employees to watch that space, because I understand that in the next day or so, if they haven't already announced it, there will be a couple of more school boards or school systems that will be having job fairs, to include Arlington County. So, very exciting. And also, I really appreciate the emphasis that we will not have any sort of shaming when it comes to
of shaming when it comes to students wanting to enjoy both a breakfast or a lunch, so that's great. A couple of events coming up I want to make the community aware of. Tomorrow, I will be attending the Faith Alliance on Climate Change in our area, and we will be talking about climate change and how government bodies can most effectively impact our CO2 footprint, so that'll be very interesting, and I look forward to the dialogue. And then on Monday night, SEPTA is hosting a book signing at Robinson Secondary School, and the book signing is for the book Voices Around the IEP Table, so I urge people who want to know more and better understand how to make the IEP process most effective, that they should attend that meeting on Monday night. And on Tuesday, I will be at Newington Forest PTA for their monthly meeting. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.